Joe Stevens.
I found this last night. It's a radio commercial.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to get started with our city council meeting here shortly. But prior to that, we've got a couple of quick proclamations that we want to read. This, every year, December 21st, we do a special memorial. And it's the National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And we've worked with Joe and Joppa. And Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you to say a couple of words, and then we'll read our proclamation.
Thanks. Not really, hi, everybody. Thank you. I'm not even really sure what to say. We do this Iowa Homeless Memorial every year at the State Capitol on December 21st, because it's the first day of winter and the longest night of the year. We've been doing it now. This will be our 11th year. And we'd really rather not be coming up here every year and doing this. We'd rather end homelessness. And so I would just encourage all of you council members and everyone here today to, please, let's have a conversation about this in 2020. And let's just stop this. It's crazy. And it can be stopped. And so, Mayor, thank you so much. You've been doing this with us for 11 years. And every year, the mayor is here with us, and we sign this proclamation. It's very meaningful. This year, the governor will join us again. And so just thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Our proclamation reads as follows. Winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income men, women, and children in Des Moines. The spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for the affirmation and renewal regarding our commitment to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated the National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council. And whereas Joppa organizes the Iowa Homeless Memorial each year to honor them as human beings and fellow citizens, and to prevent future homeless deaths by recommitting ourselves to provide fundamental solutions to homelessness. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, the citizens of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion, concern for all, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, in remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as is the city's and the county's collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our whole city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2019, is National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In recognition of the people who have died homeless in and around Des Moines, we hereby ask all of our citizens to take a moment of silence in remembrance and encourage our citizens to support all efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. And I want to thank all those who have committed to trying to further this effort to end homelessness, and to you, Joe, and everybody that is working with you. Thank you so much. All right, David, come on up. 2020, I think, is the Year of the Tree. And I'm going to turn it over to David Yon, our municipal arbiter, to kind of give us an update on what's going on. Then we got a quick proclamation.
So we're in the middle of writing our first-ever Urban Forest Master Plan. We were waiting till we got our first-ever computerized tree inventory to begin that process. We expect to roll it out in the mid-year of 2020. And we thought we would like to celebrate all year long, to provide emphasis about trees and their benefits, and all the good things they do to us. And before I quite get that far, I'll take a point of special privilege and thank a volunteer. You've heard me thank her many times before. But since she's a long-suffering volunteer who works for no pay, I did once again want to appreciate my long-suffering volunteer, Jeanette, who's been with me since 2012. And she, in fact, is doing some work on one of the chapters for the Urban Forest Master Plan. So, and because behind every long-suffering servant, there's a long-suffering spouse, I have a gift both for Jeanette and for your husband, John. And would you help me thank Jeanette for her years of service? We have a couple of speakers today. The first one up will be Dr. Jan Thompson from Iowa State University. And the students up there have been a great help to us. And she's going to tell us about their work on behalf of our Urban Forest Master Plan.
Thank you very much, David. So I have one of these numbers rundown things, and it starts at 1 and it goes to 30. But don't worry, I'm not going to use every number in between. So first of all, we've been just blessed and privileged to work with David and the entire staff here in the city. So that's one great city forester. You will have one great Urban Forest Master Plan. There have been two universities so far involved in this. Three faculty members at Iowa State, four external advisors, a couple in the DNR and a couple in Trees Forever, who you'll hear from both today. Seven different majors represented among the students who have worked on the plan. Eight years that we've been working together on various aspects of this, if you go back to 2013 and the work of Nick and Danny. 14 chapters that the students have been involved in supporting and developing ideas for. Altogether, 30 students at Iowa State University and one at Drake that I have worked with. And a couple of them went for two, and one of them went for three chapters. So a lot of work by students went into this. So we're really excited. The 14 chapters include chapters on stormwater, wildlife, pollinators, environmental justice, the urban heat island, riparian buffers, resiliency, green stormwater infrastructure, energy efficiency, tree management, societal benefits, big trees, large landowners. And that doesn't mean, like, big people that own land, but people who own big land. And then, community needs and opinions. And David asked me to speak just to one or a couple of these. Certainly, in terms of all of the work that we need to be engaged in for climate adaptation, will require us to really think about how we deploy trees as part of our stormwater management, and also as part of our energy savings, and part of our way of cooling ourselves. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention was the community needs and opinions. I was particularly proud of the students that worked on that chapter. And they developed a survey that basically was used verbatim, I believe, to learn the opinions and ideas of folks in Des Moines. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next up, Emma Hannigan from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Thanks, David. I'm very excited to be in Iowa's largest urban forest, celebrating the Year of the Tree and the unveiling of the master plan this coming year. Master plans are very essential for looking towards the future in our urban forests. They're crucial for providing environmental benefits, economic, and the health of our citizens and our community. And I'm very hopeful that Des Moines will be a leader for all of the other communities in setting goals. One of the items in the master plan is mirroring our statewide goal, which is increasing Iowa's urban forest 3%. So that would mean the city of Des Moines would go to 32% canopy, which would mean almost a third of our cover would be with trees. And that is essential to make sure that our community is healthy and vibrant. So thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Before I forget, I often do this, see who's in the room. Which people are here from Public Works today? All righty. And which people are here from Trees Forever and Growing Futures program? So even there, there are some Growing Futures employees, but also treekeepers, who are also the volunteer backbone of our tree mission. So we have next Leslie Burkus from Trees Forever to talk to us about the humongous success of Growing Futures, a brand-new program.
Thanks. Well, first, I'll just start by thanking city council, city manager, and the mayor for helping support Growing Futures this year. Trees Forever has partnered with the city since 2012 to train volunteers to care for trees around the city. And this year, we now employ teenagers to take care of your city trees, our city trees around Des Moines. So this has been a big year. We planted 750 trees across the city of Des Moines. We cared for over 8,000 trees by watering them throughout the summer. Our volunteer numbers are 395 volunteers. Residents of Des Moines have come out to care for trees. We have our treekeepers here waving. Steve, thank you, waving as our treekeepers, who have given 1,200 hours of service to the city. We, I'm really proud of this. Because of the city of Des Moines, we have employed 45 teenagers and young adults to care for the city trees. They get paid hourly. They get workforce development training every week, including financial literacy, resume building, green job shadowing, things that will make them our future leaders. Our community members are ready to go as tree caretakers and future leaders in this community. So we're really proud of it. Thank you to the citizens of Des Moines for helping support this. Thank you to Public Works and city council for supporting it as well.
All right. And all those accomplishments were just in year one of that program. All those youth employed, so it's been a great success. Urban trees are so important in the city that nearly every municipality in Iowa has a tree canopy growth goal. Emma mentioned 3%. Over the next 25 years, to meet that 3% goal, we need an additional 3,800 trees planted every year. We currently plant, well, the record this year was 700. So we've got to do five times the amount of the work to make this happen. And those 95,000 additional trees may sound like a lot, but the target considers the normal loss of 700 to 1,000 trees each year, just from age and storm damage. Interestingly, that 95,000 trees is reminiscent of a goal or a dream that our mayor had about a decade ago, 100,000 trees. We're obviously not making the grade yet, and we're going to need to pile on some resources to make it happen. We hope that the City Tree Replacement Fund would do that, but we still need five times that number to make it happen. All right. So we're going to ramp up efforts all this year. We're going to do as much media events as we can to highlight the importance of trees. And we are extremely grateful for the support of our city council and our mayor, and our big landowners like Des Moines Water Works. Congratulations on your new public art piece. We're looking for a piece of tree art now for our year celebration. All right. So we're extremely grateful, and we're glad now that our mayor and council are going to proclaim 2020 the Year of the Tree. Thank you.
You know, it has been pointed out with all these volunteers, the, all the goals that we set can't be accomplished by just one entity. It's all of us working together that make it happen. And I think that's, as I look in the audience here, that's how this city has come as far as it has over the last 15, 20 years. It's all of us working together. I see Polk County officials here. I see state officials here. I see city. I see business. I see residents. And it's all of us working together, and we need to continue to do that. Whether it's in your neighborhood, or it's on your own property, it's in a city park, it's in the right-of-way, it's all the places where we can work together to make this city a great place, not only for us today, but for future generations. So let's keep working together. And quickly, I'll read the proclamation. The city of Des Moines has 49,000 street and park trees, as well as 300,000 trees in the public forest. And whereas, there are more than 500,000 private property trees owned and maintained by residents in the city. And whereas, Des Moines is working with residents and nonprofit partners to increase the tree canopy cover from 29 to 32% to meet the state of Iowa's goal of a canopy increase of 3% by 2045. Now, I've got to ask you a quick question on that, Mr. Arbiter. Does that mean all across the state, or is that just the urban areas?
So every municipality.
Incorporated.
Yeah, incorporated.
So it's incorporated. We need to encourage the rest of Iowa to do the same, because I think if we went up to the, up in some of the areas of the state and looked at the history, that over the last 50 to 100 years, we've cut down about 60% of the trees that cover the state. And we've got to think about the future of Iowa, the future of our soil, the future and the quality of our water. And trees really are a great partner in helping to preserve this state and our water and our resources for the future. So the Des Moines residents will need to plant 3,000 trees annually on public and private property to achieve our goals. And the residents of Des Moines are encouraged to increase the urban tree canopy through planning programs such as Growing Futures and Tiny Trees. City of Des Moines Public Works Department will publish its Urban Forest Master Plan and increase public education by promoting the Urban Forest Master Plan in 2020. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the city council and the citizen city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the calendar year of 2020 as the Year of the Tree. And we urge all of our citizens and people in and around Des Moines and Iowa to celebrate 2020 as the Year of the Tree in Des Moines specifically, and to support efforts to plant, maintain, and celebrate the urban trees and woodlands. Let's give all these volunteers a great big hand. Now, prior to the start of our city council, we're going to get started here in a minute. We've got a young man here that has been on the city council for a little while. And unfortunately, this is his last meeting. And I'm going to ask him to come up now. And Chris Coleman, come up, and we're going to give you an opportunity to say a couple of words. Chris?
Hi, everybody. Earlier, we had a proclamation, and I've been able to be there. The event is one of the sparkling jewels in our community. It's the memorial at the Capitol for homeless. And if, on December 21st at 5:30, I don't know if he said this, I wasn't listening very carefully, I guess, but it's the longest day of the year, and why they do it every year on the 21st. I hope that you'll join him. It's always a really moving, the longest night of the year. Thank you. Shortest day, longest night. Man, I got hecklers here. I'm really happy to be here, and I have been amazingly lucky to be on this journey. I got elected 20, almost 22 years ago. In, you know, an election I probably shouldn't have won. It was on a shoestring budget. It was a long time ago. And my family and my life have changed a lot. I'm going to introduce my family in a minute, but our 16-year-old daughter, she turned 17 in a week. She was born five years after I got elected. That's how long I've been doing it. The other marker about doing it long is, when I first got elected, council members, nobody up here was elected then, but being on the city council came with, like, this technology perk. And as soon as you got elected, you got a call from the city clerk where you could run down to the city hall and get your beeper. Now, half the room doesn't even know what a beeper is, but long before cell phones or anything else, if somebody had to get you, you had a little thing on your belt where they'd call in and punch their number in, and all you saw was the number, and you could call them back. So I've been doing this long enough that the key to success was following up on your beeper messages. I've been very lucky. My family is here. Would you guys come up with, and stand with me? So... I'm going to introduce them, and most of you, most of them, you're going to get a picture. All right. I'll go in order. This is the boss. She's the CEO of Team Coleman, and she's the one that let this all happen. Nick is the oldest. Maggie is down here. She lives downtown, works at one of our great company, at Principal, which is, like, really great for me when nobody lived downtown, except Carl, when I got elected. That's a compliment. Jesse is number three, works at Principal downtown. Katie is number four, a nursing student at Creighton. And Ellie is our show choir junior at Dowling. And we're going to go see her first performance at 7:30. So you may think I'm going to talk a long time, but we will be done by 7:30, because I got to go watch her. There's a lot of people that I'd like to thank, and I'm not going to go through them, because it's almost everybody in this room. But in a couple of categories, I want to just acknowledge really important people. This is my dad, Ron. He flew back from Arizona today to surprise me, and I'm happy about that. When I first decided to run, I told Marcy first. We, of course, talked about it a long time. And I went out to see my mom and dad. I told them I was thinking about it. Before I left that night, he had written 100 letters to his friends asking for money for me. There's a lot of people, but nobody more than him, who's kind of made this happen and made sure I was grounded and made sure that I didn't mess up. So thank you. He grew up on East 29th Street, right next to Grandview Golf Course, became an incredible golfer, as he caddied for all the names that played over at Grandview in the late 40s and 50s. But I always thought that his experience growing up on the east side and talking about that made me a much better citywide, city counselor, and I'll always be grateful for that. Thank you. Without thanking too many people, my brother and my sister are here, and some of their family. Terry is right here. Terry Sambita, raise your hand. And my, did Tom leave? I saw him for a minute. My right-hand person, who put up every sign, every night, we went out to put up signs at midnight till 3:00 in the morning, because we had little kids, is Pete Sand. I wouldn't be here without him. A guy I went to kindergarten and all through grade school and high school, and been buddies since I was a little guy, Pete Hunter. There's so many people that I've been around for a long time that has made this happen. There are a couple of things I want to tell you about my time on the council, because I think I just want to say them and memorialize them. When I first ran, I was careful to not overpromise. A, because I didn't think I'd get elected and I wouldn't have to really worry about promises. And B, because I really wasn't sure exactly how much I'd be able to accomplish or what I did. And I said I'd work hard. When I first ran for the council, it was, like, commonplace for city council people, never to be here, you know, to be gone for a meeting or two. And it wasn't, like, attendance at meetings was not, like, first and foremost. Tonight is, I think, almost number 700 meeting. I've participated in 100% of them. And two of them, I've had to be other places. I was at his 50th birthday party, a long ways away, in Missland. And one time, I had to be gone for a family emergency. But other than that, I've been able to be here. And I always say, we're like the original reality TV. I never left the car not excited to be up here and see kind of the city unfold and all the stories and everything happen. So I'm really proud of that, and I'm really happy that we have a city council and all my colleagues that are equally committed and work hard, many of them harder than I do. It's really incredible, the kind of people that this city has elected and attracted. That was an important commitment. I also want to say that I always tried to be really independent. And this is a little bit of a soapbox, but campaigns are getting really expensive. And it's really hard to think that people can maintain a lot of independence and really be there for the voters, as it happens. I told you, my dad raised a lot of money for me in my first campaign, $4,700, for a citywide primary and general election. To replace me, me coming in $4,700, me leaving is over $155,000. And it's just really, it's something that I think, as a society, we have to put our hands around and say, how are we going to manage this? So everybody in town, if they had a good idea and wanted to lead, could throw their hat in the ring. And that's really important to me. I have been able to be quoted and said a whole lot of fun things. My kids like to tease me. One day, I was driving across Iowa. A guy that covered us for the Register, who still works for the Register, like, he's the only one, Jason Claypool, who worked there the whole time. Clayworth, thank you. He calls me. I'm on the interstate. I think that it's not gone through, or I don't answer it in time. I put the phone down, I turned the radio back up, and I start singing again. And I'm just singing away, singing away, and, you know, somehow the light of the phone catches my eye, I look down, and I'm like, hello? And he said, "Are you singing 'Don't You Wish Your Girlfriend Was Hot Like Me'?" Which was, and that made the paper, of course. I've quoted my dad a lot, who says, "Attitude, not aptitude, determines altitude." There are, there's a lot of things. I was really proud to be a Dowling boy and a Beaverdalean. And I've been quoted from things that Pete and I, and Tom Triplet, another high school, and Leo, another high school classmate, that we learned in life, planning at Dowling. Life has dignity, and life has continuity. And all those things turn out to be really, really true. When I got to the point where I had to decide about running again this year, a quote kept coming back to me. It's from a... It's from Mark Twain. And I didn't really have to find out why I was born. I just had to remember. And I felt bad about all the time and the energy and everything that this takes. It's a blast. I've loved every second of it. But it also kind of takes away a normal routine and a normal life. And I need to be a better husband, and father, and son, and friend. And so it's time that I move on. And so it's time that I move on. And I'll always, always be happy that I've had this time. I'll always be proud of what's happened in the city. I get to go back and work every day and wake up on time and show up at work, not 9:30 with my colleagues at the BBB. Thank you for being here. But it's been really important, and if there's any peace that comes from retiring, it's kind of the peace that comes with, "Hey, I know what I'm born for." It's really, it really drives your ego, that people want your time, and people, you know, blow smoke and tell you what you want to hear. But leading a city is not what I was born to do. Leading the family and leading the good life is, and I'm really lucky to be able to walk away feeling like I can claim victory and that things are good, and things are good in Des Moines. So I just want to say thank you for the chance to serve. It's been the highest honor, and I've loved every second of it. And I wish Carl Voss all the luck in the world. He's going to be great. And this city council behind us is one of a kind. To a person, there's not a thing that I've seen any of them do where I would judge their motives or think that what they're doing is self-centered, and this community is very lucky to have you. Josh, Frank, Linda, Connie, Bill, I love you guys, and you've been so good to me. Thank you. Who did I forget? I was going to come back and talk to Joe last. I really was going to come back to you. These guys have been allies. Joe and Frank especially, maybe it's just because we're guys, and they've been a godsend to me, to have a friend and an ally as well as a colleague, and I'm really, really lucky to have served with these guys. The city is lucky to have them. So with that, let me say I thank you. I'm thrilled to have had this chance. I'll never walk away from the city because I love it here, and I'm so proud of what we've done, and I look forward to being a volunteer and a citizen. We've got plenty of politicians. We need good citizens, and I'll join that ranks. Thank you very much. God bless Des Moines.[746.12][746.12](applause)
message for the evening. Chris, would you like us to stand up, or would you like us to...
Do you mind standing?
Nope. We ask everybody that would participate with us to stand up at this time.
My mom's not here, but this was one of her favorites. People are often unreasonable and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough, but give your best anyway. For you see in the end, it's between you and God. It was never between you and them anyway. That's Mother Teresa.
Thank you, Chris. Let's call this meeting in order, and I will ask Clerk to please take roll.
Here.
Mattlebaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
County?
Here.
Westegard?
Here.
Bosin?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a form.
Thank you. We have a special item, 1-1, or 1-I. This is a special naming of a multi-use recreational bridge between Gray's Lake Park and Gray's Station Development. And I will ask Oliver, council members actually, and Joe, if you want to come forward, and we'll go through this, but, and I'd ask Chris Coleman and Marcy to please come forward. Let's all go.[954.04][954.04](laughter) Chris and Marcy, you're in the middle.
Sure. He brings out the best emotion in me, I'll tell you that. First off, thank you, everyone, for being here. This is very difficult. I've got one of my very, very best friends that I love. I've learned a ton from over the last six years, and I'm going to hate to see him go, just like all of us. He's dedicated his life to this city. I mean, 22 years of being elected to this seat. Anyone that's served in this seat, anyone that's had any type of elected, been an elected official to be elected for 22 years in the same seat citywide is an incredible thing. And we owe him and his family a great gratitude for that. When we talked about naming something after Chris, we couldn't do that without naming something after Marcy also, because I know what my wife goes through, just in six years. I can't imagine 22 years and raising five kids. It's an incredible thing, and you are a rock star, Marcy, no doubt about it.[1060.41][1060.41](applause) Just a couple of things to describe Chris. And I think we have a picture of the bridge, if we can put it up there. It's lit up in purple. Purple represents quite a different, quite a few different things. One of them is wisdom. I couldn't tell you anyone else that I've learned anything, other than the mayor, of course, sitting up here and been here this long. Process, how to deal with folks, how to get things done through this. I was never given a guideline book, or how to do this, or how to do that. It was fend for yourself, and I had to lean on some of my colleagues to make that happen, and he was one of them. A ton of wisdom that you gain as you sit in this seat to make things happen. You've got it, and it's incredible. Honor. Honor is something that you don't just have. I mean, some people, some people don't have that, and we all know what it is, and it's something special. Either you have it or you don't. And Chris is a very honorable person. What his word is, he means it. What he says, he means. He's easy to get along with. He'll tell you if he doesn't agree with you, and I've learned a lot from that. And he has a way of saying it that's not, that's very diplomatic, and I probably need to learn a little bit more of that, and I'm sorry that you're leaving, but I'll remember some of those things. Devotion. Obviously, we've talked about that. Five kids, one not even born, she's 17-years-old, devoting your time and your energy, what you've given, to this city. Absolutely incredible, and there's no way of saying thank you to that. What this city has gone through the last 22 years is an incredible transformation, and somebody that's been here from the beginning, it's incredible to say what it's gone through, and you have many, many things to be proud of. Creativity, and we see that every single day. Every single day that I've worked with Chris, I see his creativity. It's not black or white. There's a way around to make things happen, that you're able to get things done. And I will have him on speed dial to make sure that he answers this phone. You know, when I first got elected, I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to be brief. Chris would walk into a meeting 10 minutes late every single time, and I would always give him a hard time about it. I would like, "Oh, we're on Coleman time, right? This is Coleman time." Everybody who knows Chris. But he doesn't do that anymore. He's maybe two or three minutes late, but it's never 10 or 15 minutes anymore. And all the people that work at the city know that. And so I love you. I love you for putting up with all of us, for the phone calls, and, you know, talking all the time and getting things done and meeting with everyone. You earn a vacation, a leave of absence. That's what you earn. It's not a retirement. So congratulations. I'll let some others probably say something. But we also have a flag that we want to present to you, that city staff had wanted you to have. You were instrumental in getting this. You and the mayor wanted this back as our city flag a few months ago, and it means a lot to you, and we wanted to make sure that you have one. And like I said, we both love you, and thank you so much for everything that you've been able to teach me and everything I've learned from both of you.
I'm sure that lots of others have lots of things to say, and everything is true that Joe said. Chris has been there. He's been a guide. When I used to chair plan and zone, he'd even listen to me occasionally when I had some things to say. But I've got to tell you, through it all, through thick and thin, good times, bad times, the rock of that family is this gal right here.[1332.01][1332.01](applause) When Chris was out doing his politicking, the person that was holding the family together, his mom. And when he got home at night and needed a little comfort and a little bit of boost and maybe some pick-me-up, it was mom. And not only your kid's mom, but I know your mom was big in your life as well. So Dad, thank you for sharing your son and your family with us. This has been a great trip, and the best to you both, and Chris, we'll have you on speed dial. So anybody else? Bill? Anybody?
Well, this is awful tough. You know, we sat so far apart on the council, we had to send hand signals to each other because we couldn't hear each other. But Chris and I go way back, way back to Beaverdale Little League, of course, Holy Trinity, kids together. In fact, if you want to start pointing a finger at somebody that got me started in politics, it was Chris. He pointed me to the zoning board of adjustment. Now, listen to the date, September 10th, 2001. And you know everybody knows what the next date was. I thought, "What did I do? I must have done something here." But with his foresight and his ideas, I was chairman for nine years, and it really meant a lot to me. And he was there the whole time, giving me ideas, supporting me, and then when I decided that I wanted to try to do the same thing, I wanted to be Chris Coleman Jr., I started to go through the same process. I leaned on him for tremendous ideas. He was always there for me, and when I got on, it just was such a relief to have somebody with that knowledge level, the competence, the kind of thing that you want to have compassion for. And you had the drive, the seriousness, to keep this city moving forward. I've learned so much. I've just, I feel like I've gotten up to here. I need to get back up here, so I'm going to listen to what Councilman Coleman said. You know, "You're not retiring, chief. You're going to be just taking a little vacation." Chris, I love you.
I love you.[1471.12][1471.12](applause)
I just want to say thank you. We love you so much. Thanks for everything. And you, I have you on speed dial, and it's going to stay on speed dial because I'm going to depend on you, just like I have for the last four years. So thank you very much.
You can do it without me. I'll be there for you, but you're...[1503.12][1503.12](applause)
Mr. Coleman, you have known me the longest. In fact, I think I have your original yard sign, because it was more burgundy-ish, I think. I think it's still in the garage. Keep putting it out, putting it out. Bosins and Coleman's go way back. And it's been great, the short time I've worked, but it's been greater the friendship. And the appleishish workers that are all here, every one of his kids are appleishish workers. So we appreciate you supplying us with a great workforce.
I appreciate you sending treats home with them at night.
I know.[1539.23][1539.23](laughter) A few apple sticks might be coming your way. But thank you for what you've done for the city. You have truly seen it through the Renaissance, and it wouldn't be what it is today without your guidance and your dedication to it. So again, thank you, and we'll be seeing you.
You know, I'm probably the short timer, right? You know, I haven't known you as long as the others, but I feel like I've probably learned just as much. And one of the amazing things, when you look at the people who come here, you look at your family, you look at your friends, it's what you model from what a public servant should be. And it's the words that you say, the inspirational quotes that guide you, the values that are evident in what motivates your service. It's, you're just a fundamentally decent person. And one of the ways that you see that expressed, you know, Don was pointing out, you've worked with a lot of council members over the years. And one of the things that I have learned and enjoyed watching is there are some pretty different personalities on this council. Pretty different approaches to policy, and you've figured out how to work with us all. And you've figured out how to solve problems with us all, and that is what real public service is about. We're here to solve problems and make our community better. And I know even when we've disagreed, that that's why you're here, and that's what makes someone a good public servant. So thank you for modeling that for me and for our community. Can I say one quick thing? A couple of these guys went through a long fall of talking to a lot of neighbors, and I got to see the mayor, and he would say something at almost every, at every occasion that made me happy every time I heard it. This flag is a flag of bridges, and he would say almost everywhere he went, "Rivers divide, but bridges unite." And I just want to say thanks to the council. I love that a bridge, I love that it's a bridge. I love it, and it means a lot. And the day we opened it, I stayed for a long time, not knowing anything about it, because it's just beautiful. It connects my daughter's apartment to Gray's Lake. She's about as close to the bridge as anybody right now. It's just a beautiful area, and I'm really happy about that, and thank you. I guess you haven't voted yet, but...[1727.23][1727.23](laughter)
All right. We're going to vote in just a minute.
I will move item 1-I.
Item 1-I has been moved. Ask everybody to vote, including Mr. Coleman.
I'm looking at my counselor.
You can if you like.
I'll abstain. Haven't done that very many times.
Six yes, one abstain. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.[1794.62][1794.62](applause)
Well deserved.[1796.62][1796.62](applause) Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Could we, uh, the amendments, quickly, uh, we already did the naming of the multi-regulational, uh, bridge. Item 4I was added, is consideration of five-day, um, Class C liquor, uh, permit for the Embassy Club. Eleven was withdrawn by the Engineering Department. Uh, 16, uh, double I was added, is approving a recommendation from Councilmember Westergaard to appoint Lori Baumann to the Access Advisory Board, seat 13, for a four-year term commencing June 15th, of 19 to June 15th of '23. Uh, 16, uh, triple I was added, is a, approving a recommendation from Councilmember Coleman to appoint Chase Home to the Neighborhood Revitalization Board, seat 6, for a three-year term commencing June 30th of 2018 to June 30th of 2021. Uh, 29, uh, was corrected, its roll call. Regular agenda items, um, uh, 52 has 40, uh, 55, um, I was added, uh, Councilmember Coleman to request to speak on a variety of items. And, uh, 66B is corrected, its roll call. Um, and, uh, with that, if somebody could give us a motion?
Um, somebody's here wanting to speak on item 9. There we go.
We're not there yet.
Oh, sorry. Thought we were gonna get him in here. I'm looking for you.
We'll go ahead and vote on this one tonight, since there's so much on it. Mr. Coleman?
Case, I'm waiting.
I wasn't waiting, sorry. Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 51. Uh, quickly, item 4K, Coleman votes no. Item 4L, Coleman votes no. Item 4DD, Coleman votes no. Item 4EE, Coleman votes no. Item 6A, Coleman wishes to speak. Item 26, Councilmember Gray votes no. Item 33...
I, I don't need to speak on that.
Okay, 36?
Uh, I'll do 36 and 37 still.
And 38, uh, Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak. Item 39, Councilmember Coleman wishes to speak. Item 42, Councilmember Gray wishes to speak. And item 51, Councilmember Coleman wishes to speak. Uh, I heard item 9, member, okay?
I'll move the remaining.
Any others? Seeing none, now it's been moved. Should we go straight to the hearings?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Uh, before we start, the, um, the consent items, uh, because it's past 5 o'clock, we're gonna go straight to the hearing items. Um, hearings start with item 61. And let's note that it is 5:04. Item 61 is on the issuance of a replacement quitclaim deed conveying a portion of vacated Bryant Street right-of-way to Benny Genovese and Diane Marie Renzo. Anyone here wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we get a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, uh, I just want to clarify my vote. This is my uncle and my first cousin, so I will be abstaining from, from this vote.
Okay.
I'll move item 61.
Here, hold on. Okay, thank you.
Mine needs to be registered as yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Six yes, one abstain. Motion carries.
Item 62, on a conveyance of vacated alley right-of-way west of and adjoining 3844 Sixth Avenue to Daniel R. Berkeley for $25, for Brookhold. Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I will move item 62.
Sorry.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 63, which is on the Second Amendment to the service agreement and lease with Metro Waste Authority for the operation of a program for the collection and processing of yard waste materials to correct a Scribner's error. Council Communication number 19-539. Anyone here to speak about this? Scribner's error regarding metro waste?
Seeing none, I'll move item 63.
Item 63 has been moved. Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 64, on a conveyance of an excess city property south of and adjoining 1530 East McKinley Avenue to Golinski Family Real Estate LLC and Albev Properties LLC for $2,960. Anyone here to speak to this item?
I'll move item 64.
Item 64 has been moved.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 65, on the conveyance of city-owned property at 200 Southeast 15th Street to the Des Moines Industrial LLC for the development of a multimodal transloading facility within the southeast agribusiness urban renewal area for $1,434,000. Uh, ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, um, this is a pretty exciting project. I'm really glad that we're almost there. We're almost to the finish line. And, uh, this is great for our region. Um, I think it's, uh, it, it'll be a real positive impact for our entire region. So I will move item 65, unless there's any other comments.
I, I would just say, the last, uh, couple of years, Joe served as vice-chair of the MPO. He takes over his chair, I think, in January or February. Um, this wouldn't be happening without the MPO and the board leadership there. So, great job. This is really, really important.
I will note, as we are voting, um, as I did this morning, uh, one of my relatives that's sitting in the back, we share a great-great-grandfather. Uh, I have no, uh, interest in this at all, but to avoid a, an appearance of any conflict, I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
Six yes, motion carries. One abstain.
Item 66, these are items regarding the Des Moines transloading facility, is approving a development agreement with the Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, for the Des Moines transloading facility, and authorizing contingent assignment and assumption of IDOT Railroad Revolving Loan and Grant Program, RRLGP obligations. Uh, item B under that is the authorization for additional action. We'll open it up and see if there's anyone to speak on this item.
Mr. Mayor, just to, uh, echo some of Councilman Coleman's, uh, the MPO, our legal department, engineering, economic development, um, everyone played a hand in this. And, you know what? Hats off to our staff. They did a wonderful job of helping us get it to the finish line. And thank you very much for all of you. I know, uh, it's been kind of a heavy lift for, for everyone involved, but, uh, we appreciate all your hard work, and, and the entire region does. So I will move 66A and B.
Uh, for the same reasons, my vote will be the same on this one.
Six yes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Item 67, on the southeast, uh, 9th Street Stormwater Pump Station and Improvements Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, and the engineer's estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as Woodruff Construction LLC, Donald A. Woodruff, President, $8,186,736.62. Council Communication number 19-550A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open up the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak to 67 or 67A.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move 67 and 67A.
And I'll take the collection for the 62 cents.
Been a while since we've had one of those.
I know. I thought people were suddenly listening for us for change.
No, we got another one coming up.
Oh, boy.
We're gonna make almost a dollar.
Seven.
I will say on that one, by the way, that, uh, here we are again, working on, uh, flood protection and control for the citizens and the businesses of the city of Des Moines. So, we've got a lot of work to do, but we're moving forward. And I want to thank our staff and manager for, uh, keeping us on, on target here. Item 68, on the Des Moines Fire Station Number 11 Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Rokon Corporation of Iowa Inc., Russell Carew, President, $6,129,000 even. Council Communication number 19-544A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open up item 68, Fire Station Number 11. Anyone here to speak to this? This is a project we've been looking forward to for a while.
Yeah, since...
Linda?
About five years.
Yep.
If not more.
Yeah, no, I, I want to move it. I'm sorry, I was just waiting. I just want to, I will move item 68, but I just want to, um, express my appreciation to my fellow council members who supported this. I know, a couple of years ago, we were having discussions, and we really didn't have a way to pay for it. We figured that out. We have a way. And I'm excited about it. But I'm excited about all the good things that are coming with the fire station. We're going to keep our firefighters safe. They will have their own workout room. Right now, they're, they're working in, in a large area next to where the fumes from the, from the vehicles are. So, we're working to keep them safe. They'll have, um, it's geothermal. We're just doing everything right with it. So, thank you. It's exciting. We're, we're very proud of it. And I can't wait to put that shovel in the ground.
We're gonna help those people in your ward, that the response times are, are hurting a little bit. So, that's, that's a, that's a great...
It's for everyone.
Yeah. And keep moving forward, and...
Well, I agree. I think this is a much-needed improvement. And our first responders deserve the best. Uh, the only comment that I'm gonna make is, um, the contractor. Um, Chris and I know this contractor pretty well. He's been doing a job on 44th and Hickman, we're going on year three now, to put Calvin Community in. Um, they were asked by the register this summer when they were gonna be completed, and they said November. November's come and gone. Uh, I looked on the bid responses. They said they'd have it done by January of 2020. I sent the pictures in. There isn't any way that they'll ever have this thing done by January. So I just want to make sure we move cautiously on this. Make sure all the safeguards are in place, because if, if, it's great to help our first responders, but if we don't see the thing done until 2023, we've got a real issue. So, I just want to put that out there. Make sure people know that, uh, we gotta make sure they follow every letter of, uh, the bid.
We'll keep them on task.
Thank you, Linda.
Absolutely.
We did, they did fill out a post-bid questionnaire.
I read that.
They called us.
Well, part of it was they're gonna finish Calvin by January, and they're never gonna do it. I don't know, I don't trust the response. Just my, my view.
Okay. Good to know.
So Linda, item 68 and 68A.
68 and 68A, I'll move it.
Just a, a pointed question. Is, is there a, a timeline when they need to be completed on this? Is there a, is there a clause in there if they don't finish when they're supposed to? Is that, is that part of the construction?
Yes, it absolutely is.
Okay. Well, that should help us, Bill.
I hope so. I, I don't want to have, uh, staff give them a push because, well, the weather was bad, or this was bad. Um, that's where we get ourselves behind in all these projects, so...
That would come to you.
And there's, I assume that there's a level of liquidated damages in there if, if they get far behind, and...
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
But when, but when we take action to do a change order or something, that's often on the consent agenda, that, that gives them a license to go later, too, almost always. You know, because something unexpected came up that we agreed with. So, watch those.
Yes.
We, we definitely do that.
And we don't have to worry about weather, because it's always sunny in Moore, too.
You get to vote.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 69, which is on River Bend and King Irving Sewer Separation Phase 2B Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Corel Contractor Inc., Grant S. Corel, President, $2,706,122.15. Council Communication number 19-549A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. And here again is, uh, us, and I want to thank staff for moving forward on these, uh, really needed, uh, sewer improvements and separation efforts. Uh, this, this'll make a big difference up there.
11 million.
Seeing nobody, uh, I wholeheartedly support what you're saying, Mayor. This, uh, much needed in the, in the area. Uh, it's really putting a lot of, uh, we're separating the sewers, but we're getting that stormwater off the streets, off of the lawns, out of the basements. It's, uh, something that I'm glad to see. And we're gonna keep pushing forward with it. So, I'm gonna move 69 and 69A.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 70 is on the Waveland Clubhouse Free Roofing and Window Repair Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Bergstrom Construction Inc., Tom Gorgas, President, $131,400. Council Communication number 19-551A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak on item 70 or 70A?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 70 and 70A.
Thought I voted, sorry.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that completes our...
You're up, Chris.
Items on the hearings, and it is now 5:19. Let's quickly move back to item 6A. Item 6A is one of the items on consent. Uh, it's Public Works Improvements. A is, uh, ordering the construction of the following. A is the week's middle school park improvements, receiving the bids of 114 of 20, and setting a dated hearing of February 10th of 20. The engineer's estimate here is $917,369. Council Communication number 19-552, Mr. Coleman?
Uh, just a quick note, you, you, uh, you beat me to one of the points I wanted to make. This is a neighborhood improvement concept, uh, project. Um, we talked about the stormwater solutions that we did earlier. We, uh, approved the construction contract for a new fire station, which, which is exciting. All things that we promised the voters in, when we went out for the local option sales tax. Tonight's agenda, $23 million of things we said we would do when we went out in March. You know, I've tried to say this at most meetings, as it's been, 3 million, 5 million, 8 million. Tonight, it's $23 million worth of projects that we're doing, um, that, that otherwise may not have been done without the local option sales tax. So, um, good work, citizens of Des Moines. We made promises, and we kept the promises. Good job, Mayor.
In the neighborhoods.
In the neighborhoods. This is, this is another one that is like a park, uh, desert over there.
Absolutely.
And Joe, I, the second thing I wanted to say is, I, I heard you have this, uh, dream a couple of years ago, and I know you've met with the school... a couple of years ago, and I know you've met with the school district dozens of times trying to pull this together. I, I think it's really exciting, and it's, it's a great home run for that neighborhood. A neighborhood that needs the city on their side, for sure, and another way that Ben Page and his team just always hit it out of the park.
Yeah. I would echo about our, our Parks Department and Ben and working with Bill Good and the, and the schools, you know, there was a lot of times I heard over the last few months that we don't have a good relationship with our Des Moines Public School District, and we don't work with them, and we don't do enough with them. Well, we do, and, you know, I, I can go back to almost every single meeting and show where we're helping students either with a sports, you know, package where you're able to do different sports in a public school, whether we're gonna have a park at, you know, in a, in a park desert. So, for those naysayers out there, they just haven't been paying attention, in my opinion. So I, thank you for, for pointing it out. I didn't want to pull it off there until the hearing, but, yeah, this has been something that this part of the city absolutely needs, and thanks, Ben, and your, and your department for making it happen. I will move six-A, if you don't mind.
No, please do. I, I just won't be able to vote or talk on it when it comes back, so.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item nine was a member of the audience that wants to work on approving the supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates Inc. for Design and Construction Phase Services for Forty-seventh Street and Hulkabree Construction, not to exceed forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Council Communication number nineteen dash five forty-one. Jenny.
Mayor, City Council, Jenny Kleis, twenty-five oh five, Forty-seventh Street. I just wanted to get clarification on what this was. I saw that it was for an additional sanitary sewer and construction administration services, so if somebody could just tell me what that means.
Steve, could you straighten this out?
Always. Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Steve Neighbor, City Engineer. That's correct. It's actually because of the size of the sewer boxes that are being installed and, on these projects, we actually, in some areas, have had to install two sanitary sewer lines, and so this is to add the design of those sanitary sewer lines, and then also construction administration. The consultant was, we, it's pretty common for us to sometimes hire consultants for phases of projects, and then once, so for example, once they're conceptualized, then we would do the design. Once they're designed, then we know the construction schedule, and so, so we don't have them under contract for construction phase administration, for them to answer questions, review shop drawings, and be available during the project to, to assist, and that's just because, you know, again, it's way before we know what the details are and when the duration is, and also even our own workload. Sometimes it's, you know, in this case, we have, we have city inspectors that we're putting out there, but there could be times where we may need help on the consulting end as well, so we don't know those aspects, so, but that's, that's what this is for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing that, Jenny, I hope you're happy, and I do want to say one thing. Chris and I, Connie, we sat in Jenny's front yard about a year and a half ago, not knowing who she was. Now you can step up to the council table, and you're going by first name, so you've made a lot of progress, Jenny. Thank you. I'll, I'm making motion for item nine.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Takes us down to item thirty-six. Item thirty-six, preliminary terms of an urban renewal development agreement with Oss Real Estate LLC for the historic renovation of the Farrington Place Building at twelve oh one Kiyosaku Way for a commercial development. Council Communication number nineteen dash five forty-eight. Josh.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, this will take a building that has, I think, been vacant or mostly vacant for quite some time on a, a key corridor, and hopefully revitalize it and create a beautiful, essentially new building from what is a historic building that has seen better days. And so that piece is, is an exciting part of this. For those of you who follow along at home, there was, in the initial blue letter, sort of an error in the computation of the expected return on this project, and, and I know one of the things that staff will work on in transferring this from preliminary to final terms is a minimum assessment piece of this, staff has talked about, and I just wanted to call that piece out, because the initial piece maybe raised some questions in terms of what was going in and what we were getting on return, but the corrected value looks much better, and the hope is this will be a nice addition to that corridor that will help revitalize it and add some additional vitality there. So with that, I just, I'm happy to move item thirty-six.
It's a good one.
And preserve some of the fabric of our city.
Yeah, absolutely. My building has been vacant for a long time.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is item thirty-eight, acceptance of two thousand nineteen Project Safe Neighborhood Grant Award from the Office of Drug Control Policy. Council Communication number nineteen dash five thirty. Josh.
So I, I wanted to just flag this item. One of the, the pieces that, that I've talked about, just as an ongoing item, is what we do with, and how we enforce low-level drug possession, marijuana and CBD, that's actually gotten a little bit of attention recently, and when this came on the agenda, I just had some questions in terms of whether or not this, this grant would be used in that way, because it was talking about drug enforcement. I've got information from the chief that this is really targeting violent and gun-related crime related to higher-level drug crime, and so that satisfied my question, but I just wanted to flag this as part of the ongoing question and let folks know, because I know there are a lot of folks who are concerned about this. I got a couple of emails related to, to some of enforcement issues related to low-level possession issues, and wanted to just flag that, that I've gotten assurances that this is not you, being used for those purposes. So with that, I'm happy to move item thirty-eight.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item thirty-nine, these are items regarding the Futsal Court and Birdland Sports Park. Council Communication number nineteen dash five twenty-eight is an amendment to donation and construction agreement with Kick It Forward, and B is acceptance of a mini-pitch system Futsal Court. Mr. Coleman.
I, I just wanted to pull this off again. Like Josh, I think this is a really great project, another one at Linda's Ward over by Birdland. I think the public-private partnership and the work of our Parks Board, this is just a, another sparkling jewel. I think it's gonna be fantastic, and I think the Birdland Tennis Complex is already great, and I love that we're gonna be able to play multiple sports there. Little pickleball, little tennis.
Same, too.
Yeah, good job. This is, this is great for that neighborhood.
Yeah, great.
Good job, Ben.
May I go ahead and move it, Chris?
Yes.
Thirty-nine A and B.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item forty-two is the Franklin Junior High School PUD Development Plan for Property at forty-eight oh one Franklin Avenue. We Can Build It LLC, Jeff Young is the officer. Bill Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent a list of questions through, because we've been getting quite a bit of emails from the neighbors and conversation, and we want to get some clarifications. Is there somebody that can give us some clarifications on some of these questions? That would you be, Larry?
Larry James, on behalf of the applicant, eight oh one Grand Avenue, Des Moines. I have not seen the question, so I.
I know.
I'm always wary to say I can answer a question I haven't seen, but I'd be willing to try.
Well, one of the things, the one, the issues that they have is the sign issue, and so there's a series of questions on that.
Okay.
One, when you and I were talking, and I asked, are these signs gonna be internally illuminated? He said, well, look, you'll see that on the final site plan.
Right, right.
Well, I see it on the final site plan, and they're illuminated, and we don't have any choice in it. What's the plan?
Right, so the, the, when we spoke on that specific question, the issue was, when I, when I meant internally illuminated, was the, a panel sign you see that has, like on a strip mall, that has a, you know, internally illuminated sign. What they're proposing here, and I can have the, the architects come up and discuss that further, is a, essentially a Corten steel, like you'd see a lot of the buildings downtown now, Corten steel material that has individually internally lit letters that are essentially backlit from, so it's a very attractive sign. It's not like a, you know, simply a pole sign or some sort of regular monument sign you might see in a new development. It's very attractive, it's very subtle, there's not a lot of light emitted from that, and it's all LED lights, so it's not gonna be, you know, displayed in the neighborhood. It still has to meet, obviously, all the, the lighting standards that the staff has put in place in the PUD, so the, the architects are confident that's gonna, you know, satisfy that, that criteria.
Is there a chance we have an image or something of, of a light one?
Sure, and I, I wasn't aware this was gonna be a question tonight. I can, I can show you what we have on the, and the architects are here in the, in the audience, if they may have an image with them, I'm not sure, but I can show you what is on the elevation that might give you a sense. I believe this was shown at the, if you can show the. Do you have a picture?
Lindley Kent, Newman Munson Architects. We did show some, some images of this on, on the PUD, but on the site plan submittal, we have some just basic elevations there, but much like Larry was saying, this is internally lit, it's not a plastic front, we have metal paneling on both sides with cutout letters, so basically the void of the sign is lit, so it's just the, the light that is basically happening inside that sign that's coming through those letters. It's not directly lit at those letter locations, so it will not be, there won't be any glare, you know, the, the signs are oriented to face along Forty-Eighth Street as well, so they're not directly facing any of the neighbors. We've really worked to make sure that none of this is gonna be glaring, and as Larry said, we have to abide by all of the conditions.
I think staff said with seventy-foot candles was the amount, two feet from the light. We just want to make sure, they want to make sure it's not like the Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh over there on Merle Hay and Hickman where it's, just laser in your bedroom, so.
Right, definitely not like that.
Okay. That was one of the concerns. I already took care of that. And these, the signs are just gonna say FJH or whatever.
So on the, just on this, these elevations, I can show you, this is essentially the, the stack that's on the site currently, so it's gonna say FJH, basically the old stack that's, that was used for what I assume was the furnace in the past.
Yeah.
On the side of the, on the south elevation along Franklin, you see it says Franklin Junior High on the south elevation, and I can show you exactly where that's gonna be on the building here in a second. This is the existing monument sign, just showing Franklin Junior High, and then finally the, the sign I, we just spoke about, is this, this sign right here, just says Franklin Junior High. That's all.
Okay, good. And this is all Franklin Junior High signage then, right?
Correct.
You planning any more signs?
No, no, we're not. Not the, the, the proposal you have before you does not include any additional requests for signage.
Answering all the right ones there, Larry. One request from the neighbors is, since all activities are pretty much done by ten o'clock, can we, and this was something I was hoping we could get put in, but can we get the lights shut off at ten?
I think the only question that I would have, and I don't, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head, but the, because I wasn't aware of the, the issue, I think the applicant would be willing to work with the city on a specific time, but I think the issue, if the, if the event ends at, at ten, you wouldn't want it, someone to just come out to a dark parking lot from a, let's say from a show. If the show ends at, at ten, for example, I'm just hypothetically, you come out to your car, you want to make sure you can find your car, so, you know, whether or not that, that there's a limit on that, I'm sure that they could figure out some limit, but I think that at the same time, there is some value in having some, some lighting on the site to make sure for safety purposes.
We're gonna have the, the parking lot lit, and we're gonna have streetlights out there.
Okay, okay.
They're probably gonna be.
You're talking about the sign?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misheard you. You know, we can, we haven't discussed that, though, and I, I don't have the answer to that. I think that, you know, if, if, I'll put it to you this way. Staff has the authority, if this sign doesn't meet the standards they've set forth, that, you know, they can address that going forward. So, what I, everything that I've been told and shown by the architects and by the client is that the, the sign is gonna be something that's gonna fit with the existing building. It's not gonna be intrusive, it's not gonna be glaring. If that's not the case, you know, we can cross that bridge and come.
I think that's what they're saying, because there, there are some families have young kids there.
Oh, yeah.
They put them bed at eight thirty, nine o'clock, they don't want to have lights blaring in the bedroom, so that's, that's a concern that they have.
It won't be the, you know, the old Seinfeld, Kenny Rogers Chicken sign, it won't be that sign, so. Sorry.
I love your thought process. And I see that we give an administrative relief to the sidewalk on Forty-Eighth, Forty-Ninth Street, right?
Right, and I think that was a question maybe for the architects. There was a, they were trying to figure out how to fit the sidewalk on that street, and I think they've come to an agreement with staff on how to, to resolve that.
So, so there will be a sidewalk all the way around?
If I, my understanding is there's gonna be a sidewalk on the west side of the street, is that, is that correct?
There's a current sidewalk on the west side of Forty-Ninth. There was a discussion about whether there should be one added on our side of the site, on the east side of Forty-Ninth, but there are current hedges there that would have to be basically ripped out and would harm the privacy of the neighbors that then live on the west side of Forty-Ninth. So, instead, what was discussed was putting in a truncated dome sort of transition that would cross Forty-Ninth along Franklin Avenue.
I, I have a little bit of a problem with not the sidewalks. You know, we're dealing with that. I know Steve Neighbor, we've been dealing with some sidewalks in Ward Two, and, you know, they want to put in five-foot sidewalks, and the neighbors aren't very happy with that, you know, and we're trying to put sidewalks all around school routes, and then we have this huge site, and we're, we're allowing them to not put in sidewalks, and I, I don't think I can support that.
Brett Douglas, Genus Landscape Architects. I'll offer an exhibit here that helps illustrate the site context a little bit. So this is viewing north on Forty-Ninth. The sidewalk in question is along here. So you can see viewing north, we have a three-hundred-foot-long row of burning bush. In order to put a sidewalk there, we would have to cut those burning bushes effectively in half or remove those, or put the sidewalk immediately adjacent to the curb and be narrower than the city's required five-foot walk. So what we're proposing is to improve the crosswalk here. You see, there's no painted lines for a crosswalk, and to, on the west side, there is not a ADA-accessible curb ramp, so we're proposing to put a curb ramp in that's compliant, and move pedestrians along the existing sidewalk under the mature trees and add trees in that right-of-way. So really effectively, we're gonna add screening on the east to the cars and route people on what we feel is the safest pedestrian route, which is the west side of the street.
And there, there's no residential at the end of this? This is all open?
Dead end.
Dead end.
Tower Park.
Yeah, they're parked there, right. Okay. And the sidewalk goes all the way down?
Correct.
To Tower Park, I mean, opposite side of the street, but to Tower Park, correct?
Correct.
That does provide some screening for the residents.
It's not a heavily, is it not, it's not a heavily traveled road either, is it?
No.
That's a dead end.
The only place to go is into Franklin Parking Lot or into the back driveway of the apartments there, which is, not very many people do, I mean, it's a thin driveway back there.
Are you okay with it, Bill?
I'm good, I can use that somewhere else, I know I can.
Well played.
Bill, anything else?
Nope, that was a, I think you took one last look, I think, I think you've answered all of them. Yes.
Okay, does somebody want to move 42 then?
I'll move item 42.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Takes item 51. Item 51 are items regarding amendments to zoning ordinance, A is the final consideration of amendments to the zoning ordinance, B is the final consideration of amendments to the planning and design ordinance, and C is the final consideration of the amendments to the citywide zoning map. Mr. Coleman.
A week ago, we met in a special meeting so that this could get to the finish line on my watch while I was here. I just wanted to thank the council for that. There are 100 people in the room that work for the city that deserve a lot of credit for the original zoning code and these fixes that we wanted to have happen. Scott, your leadership on this was really important. There are a couple of things that I wish could have gotten done, and I, I hope the council takes up a common sense way to, to expand the rights of Airbnb in, with, with regulations and board of adjustment overview, but other than that, I, I think, I think all of us had a list that was like 100 things long that we were worried about or needed written more clarity or understanding or just to change, and I think other than that little issue on the Airbnb, all of the things on my list, and I think most people's list, got done between what we did in early November and what we're doing tonight, so legal team, manager team, all of community development. Jeff, I know your, your team did a ton of heavy lifting on trying to make sure this all works, and heck, just to figure out how and what to delete from the old code was a year-long process, so thank you for that. This is really good, and as you can see, all the people that were on us to, you know, change this and wanted to call us names, they all want time to speak tonight, they'll all be here congratulating us on getting this right. That's sarcasm, because as soon as people get what they want, they forget us.
Yep.
You'll forget me tomorrow morning.
Never, Chris.
So, it's good, I know nobody...
We can't forget you at all, because Cross is going to be sworn in, I don't think till what, the 15th of January or something, so you're still on...
He's, he's it. If, if there's an emergency or, or a flood, I'm around until the 31st, but let's hope you don't see me again.
So, two things, Mr. Manager, Airbnb's he mentioned, and missing middle, and that, that's something that we still need to take up, and hopefully we'll see that February, March, so...
I thought it was coming in late January.
Airbnb. The missing middle. We haven't had a lot of discussion about that, missing middle and some of the, what we're going to require and what we'd like to see, so I think we need some more discussion about that.
And, and I have a list of things I was going to talk about later, but one of them is abatement, and that missing middle, the real, the real trick is going to be, how do we align our abatement program, modernize it with the zoning code, and I, I think the missing middle should be, should be highly incentivized compared to other kinds of building types in, in the community, and now that we have a form-based code, it's easier to kind of say, these are the kinds of housing types that we want to incentivize as, as opposed to others, so that, that'll be big work for the council in the first quarter, I think.
All right, you going to move it?
I'll move it, thank you for letting me move it.
51, A, B, C.
I'll move A, B, C.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that ends the consent agenda. Takes us to ordinances, first consideration item 52 is amending sections 114-1103 and 114-1105 of the municipal code relating to speed limits and parking and parking fines in municipality-owned parks. Council communication number 19-525. Anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none?
I'll move item 52.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Item 53, it's on amending chapter 42 of the municipal code regarding noise ordinance, council communication number 19-527. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the community development director and requires six votes. We'll go ahead and open it up, and see, it looks like we have a young man here that would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam Carroll, 4340 Allison Avenue, proud Beaver Dillian, proud constituent of Mr. Coleman. Since this is Chris Coleman Appreciation Night, I want to thank him, because at 2:55 this afternoon, I was driving over here for the reception, and Chris called me, knowing that the sound ordinance has always been a, something that we've been working on, and just reminded me or asked me if I knew about it, and I said, gosh, no, I'm actually over on my way to celebrate your, not retirement, but moving on from the council, and one more example, I think, of Chris's great work as representatives for us as a constituent, so thank you, Chris, I'm proud to be not just your constituent, but a friend and associated with the great Coleman family, so thank you all. The amendment, first of all, let me just say, we are very appreciative of the staff, Sue Ann Candy, Officer Stroop, through the work to get the sound ordinance right, not just with many different venues, not just waterworks that I represent, but all the groups from Des Moines Music Coalition and the other outdoor venues like Simon Estes and Brenton the City Properties, to work through this and get it right, not just for the people that utilize it, but also for the, the neighbors and, and people that, that make Des Moines their home. We think that based on the, the work session, we are really pleased with the direction it was going, we were under the impression that we'd get to see it before it came before you, so that we could make any little final tweaks. I think we're getting in the right direction, but as I was quickly texting out to all those other groups to make sure we got this right, they were a little concerned about waiving the Second Amendment before we got a chance to respond to it. Each venue has a little bit different thing, and I think there are minor tweaks, but I think there are some questions that they have, so we would just ask that you, whatever action you take, that you don't waive that second, or you don't waive the second reading until we've had a chance to work out through some of those questions with the city staff.
I think some of us got that test.
Your request would be to, on the amendment, to move the first reading, but not the final?
Yes.
Sure.
It's supposed to require three, you just don't want us to do it in final?
Well, I, yeah, I think, I think we'd like to, you know, if we can get it right by the next one, you can waive the third one, we just, we'd like to be able to respond as a collective group before you consider something, make sure that we've got everything covered.
It's going to be January 13th.
So January 13th? This one will bring the next reading, right, Mr. Mayor?
I think that works. Okay.
I mean, excuse me, and I'm, I'm happy to move it, you know, one of these things, I don't know that I was fully satisfied with where we got during the work session, but these type of issues are works in progress and a balance, and I think this is, it's kind of a, we'll keep trying it to get the right balance, I, I think what's reflected here is the compromise that came out of the work session. A piece of that that I'm hopeful for is that it's going to help us collect data a little bit better so that we understand what's going on and can respond to neighbor concerns with data a little better than we have been in the past, but my hope is that we will continue to be working on getting that balance right and listening to, to neighbor concerns as this process moves forward, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into trying to understand, understand that and think this through. So with that, I'm happy to move just the first reading.
53?
On item 53.
Okay. Seven yes.
All right, next reading will be the 13th. Item 54, these are items related to boards and commissions, council communication number 19-558. A is amending chapter two of the municipal code eliminating the Des Moines Music Commission. B is amending section 2-1046 of the municipal code relating to boards, commissions, committees, and agencies relating to the appointment of members and qualifications. C is amending chapter 42-304 and 42-305 of the municipal code by removing the citizens' odor board and by striking reference to the citizen odor board. Let's open it up, item 54 related to boards and commissions, anybody here to speak to any of these?
So...
All right. Item 54, any conversation, any ideas?
So, 54C, if we're going to eliminate that board, I would like to direct the manager's office and staff to find out who is not using the best practices and to make it mandatory that we do require them to use the best practices, because somebody, and I'm sure we probably know who it is, is not doing that. That's why we have an odor, and it needs to be corrected.
I would refer, or I suggest may refer also to legal, because then there may be some considerations that have come out of there as well.
Sure, I will, I'll do both.
And I'd just like to add to that, and I know I had, asked quite a few questions on our question list earlier about this, but I think that we have to, I, I would like us, I would like to see us work more closely with Pope County. It says Pope County measures the air quality, but they're not necessarily measuring odor. Could we maybe have more information on that? I mean, I'd like to know if there, if there is a company or a business that is not meeting the standards of the air quality, how does that relate to the odor? And I know a few years ago, I had a meeting and we had a room full of people, but we had the State Health Department and Pope County, and they gave us a really good overview of what's happening, but we know that we still are faced with odors, and we can't seem to determine where they're coming from.
I think we know where they're coming from, we just need to work with legal and, in the manager's office to see what we can require them to do, I would say, but I think we know where the odors are coming from, I think that that's already been...
I think that's one reason on the, not needing a commission, because I think it's very defined on who is...
We, I think we know, I think some of us are too...
Who the businesses are, so I think that, that to your direction, giving to legal, I think it's, but I think to tie back to the air quality and all that, I think it'd be important if they are measuring that, too. Yeah.
Well, and how do you measure it, and, because if you can't measure it, how do you manage it, and who is it that is setting the standards for that, because the reading through that code at the state level is a little bit troublesome and very vague, and, you know, we had a question not long ago about Clean Water Act, and how do we, you know, enforce that? Seemed like there was a lot of stuff in our water that was coming down the watershed and that was pollutants, but there, nobody apparently has the responsibility or the authority to regulate water, which I found absolutely amazing, and especially in rural areas. So I'd love to get as much information back from legal as possible about what possibly we can do about odor and see what we can do about cleaning it up.
And I'm not sure that air quality is the same as the smell. I, I'm very concerned about the quality of the air, and that's what Pope County measures, and the state measures it, but I just want to make sure that our air is of the highest value.
Absolutely, and I would agree with you, but the only reason I, we're eliminating an odor board that they're, they were set out because we have a strong odor, particularly in Ward Four and in the East Village, and we're going to have a councilman on the 14th that's going to sit somewhere up here, that lives in Ward Four in downtown and probably smells it more than all of us. I would think that we're going to need to figure out, which I think we already know, where this is coming from, and they need to be having, doing the best practices, and I know we require them to do the best practices, I know legally we already require them, well, let's just make sure they're doing that. That's my only stipulation, and I, is, air quality is a completely different thing, and I would love to work with Pope County to make sure that our air is safe, and I don't have a problem.
Josh?
Yeah, I, I agree particularly with what Joe was saying. I, I do think that there are best practices that might not be in place, that, that we should be looking at that will address some of these air quality concerns, including technologies that, that are applied elsewhere, that potentially could be applied here that would improve the, improve the situation, and that, that's what the, the board is designed to do. I wanted to address a couple of the other pieces. I know in the work session, I wasn't convinced that the Des Moines Music Commission couldn't be repurposed and that there still might not be value there, so I appreciate voting on these items separately. I know we've accomplished a lot in terms of the success we've had in building our, our music scene in Des Moines, but I think that's one of those things that is constantly dynamic and that we could, we could use citizen input and perhaps reconstitute something like that, but I understand if my position on that is the minority. The other piece that I would like us to consider, I think we are just adding as drafted, 54B only addresses the, the park board. I would be interested minimally in the boards that don't have professional qualifications, adding gender balance to those boards, which would be, I think, the Access Advisory Board, the Housing Appeal Board, and maybe the Neighborhood Revitalization Board. Those all seem like good candidates to me for gender balance while we are doing this. The others, while it may be possible, I think there would be additional considerations that we would need to make, because there's an added layer of complexity when you have the, the layers of professional requirements that some of those boards have, and just, you're already picking from a very small pool with some of those professional requirements. So there, I would make an exception, but I'd be interested in, in seeing those three boards added from a gender balance perspective.
I am not in, in favor of that, and I had a long discussion with our city manager about this last night, and I see some of my questions that I put in there really didn't get in here, somebody must have taken them out, but I'm all for gender balance, but in Ward Two, we may have a different population than what other parts of the city have, and it rubs me the wrong way that, and Josh, I know that you've objected to some of my appointments, I've had like three women in the last three years that have applied for boards and commissions, so gender balance doesn't always work for every board, I think we have a tough enough time. It's working well now. I have, I have a board with the professional, I have, I have a bigger issue with some of the professions than I do even gender balance, because I've had a vacancy on the building codes for, since I, since I took... because I've had a vacancy on the building codes for, since I, since I took term four years ago because my seat requires a, like a mechanical engineer or a mechanical contractor. That's difficult to find in Ward Two. The historic preservation, they're telling me, has to be gender balanced. I don't have a woman in Ward Two, and I'm not going to appoint somebody that doesn't live in my ward, you know, that needs to be an architect or, you know, there are several professions that that person needs to be. And we simply don't have it. So do I leave the board, do I leave it vacant? I don't think that that's fair to the residents of Ward Two. I think we need to get these filled. Yes, I'm going to do my very best to put the best person in the, on the board and commission. But sometimes that's not possible. The historic preservation, I can leave it vacant or I can appoint a woman that is not an architect and doesn't meet those professions. So which, which way do we want? Because we're not going to have it both ways.
I'm perfectly fine in the boards that I did not suggest. I don't think that there are those professional requirements for the access advisory board or for the housing appeal board or the neighborhood revitalization board. There are ones that I did not specifically address or ones where I think the professional requirement question is worth raising, and that's urban design review board, building and fire code board of appeals. And maybe we need to revisit some of the professional requirements on the historic preservation because the way, the way we do that, I think we've been pretty loose with the way we've done that. And actually, half of the people who've been appointed to the historic preservation commission probably will violate the changes that we're making for some of the other qualification pieces.
Well, but what's, but what's fair to one is not the other. I have a vacancy and I'm told that I can't fill it because I have to have somebody that's with that profession. And I've looked at the members that are on there now, and I know that there are people on there that do not meet the professional qualifications.
But the historic preservation commission is one where there are certain, and this is where maybe requires a little cooperation among the council, but there, the requirements that we have are for the commission as a whole. And perhaps if there's a question about not having someone with a certain professional background, when there are multiple vacancies open, we can work and figure those things out. I mean, that's all it requires for, for something like that. And the historic preservation commission, I don't think we even have discretion on that because we might have discretion on the professional qualifications, but that's a state board and commission, and by state law, we've got to follow that.
Then we need to, we need to see all of the people that are on there and make sure that they meet those professional qualifications because I don't believe that they do.
No, I don't, I don't either. The professional qualifications are not the requirement of state law. That's what we've imposed.
Correct.
And that's what.
So we need to have a discussion.
Right. I would absolutely support that. The piece that I would like to see us do is for the boards where, you know, the access advisory board is not one that requires any, any special considerations or qualifications. And that is one where a diverse range of voices makes sense. And I think every ward should be able to find someone that can fit along those lines. So that's why I was trying to pick ones where there's consensus, recognizing we still have work to do. So that's where I was coming from. And I appreciate this conversation. And one of the things, I haven't had time to do this, but I think might be of assistance, particularly for some of these harder to fill qualifications. You know, I would like to talk to Kay about thinking about what assistance could be provided to help us look for some of these folks because they might be out there. And I remember when I worked in the governor's office, one of the challenges we had were board and commissions all across the state, and some of them had very specific requirements that we're trying to meet and meet these same type of challenges where we're trying to balance geographic diversity, professional background diversity, all of those things. And we had someone on staff who was in charge of actually looking and helping find candidates above and beyond just the folks who applied so that we could have all those voices at the table. And I think that's something that the city clerk's office could help us with. And I've struggled with some of it on my own. I've tried to balance my urban design review appointments. And one of the things I've struggled with, I need to appoint a landscape architect. And I need to find, because my other appointment has been male, I need to find a woman landscape architect in Des Moines. There's not an abundance of those folks. And that's one of the things that I'm sure if we spent some time or if Kay helped, we could find a list and then go through that list and see if any of those folks are willing to serve regardless of where they live in Des Moines and accomplish that. So that's my hope.
So can I just make a suggestion, since we have more questions than answers? Maybe we can visit this at a workshop? Would that, would that be, I mean, when we can discuss.
Well, Joe would be B.
I think we need to go ahead and.
We can vote on, we can vote on what we've got tonight and then to.
Come back to phase two.
Yeah, to expand it to Josh's point, you know, can we have, can we have a discussion and kind of see how many people we even have? Maybe Kay can give us a list of how many people we have that even have applications in.
But the professional.
No, I was just going to say, because we, this has been brought up numerous times by Mr. Manalbaum, and so I don't have a problem supporting those three that you want to do. I do think we still need another session to review some of the boards and commissions that we have. Have they just been here because they've been here, which I believe they are?
I agree.
And what purpose are they serving? And are there some other ones that we should have that we could change the dynamics of the city in a different way? I support what Josh wants to do. I think the ones, because not only is it getting citizens who want to do it, we need to, you know, you might be able to find a candidate, but do they really want to take the time? And we need to realize what is the time commitment that we're asking people. So I do think we need to review these boards and commissions in a, in a even a greater way, not just the gender balance, but what is the purpose on some of these hard to fill ones that you have to have technical people or, and a lot of them are being filled by people that really don't live in Des Moines, and I appreciate that because they're hard to find. I think we need a serious review what by law we have to have and what is the purpose they're serving. So I would support adding those three.
I don't even know what three they are. I mean, I haven't reviewed any of them.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to support.
I, I want to go back to what, what Joe said, and mayor, if I could make a quick comment. I'm, I'm for all three of them. On B especially, I'm for it because I think we can make incremental progress. This is progress. A lot of ideas that you've brought forward, and I think we can bring it back and go to the next step. But I worry that there's going to be commissions that we'd vote on tonight that aren't part of it, that maybe somebody has a really important thought and they'd never know that we were acting tonight. So before we expand, I'd like to, I'd like to at least give notice to those commissions and allow them input and know that we're taking it up. So I, and then just a quick comment on A. I was here when we started the commission. The music scene needed to be really, and the mayor and I both were, and we were really supportive. We gave a chunk of city money from Hotel Motel to, to hold the first eighty-thirty-five festival. And so many good things have grown out of that. But you can see how strong the Des Moines music coalition is, which I think is, which is a good story for government. We started something, we ignited something. Now the private sector and nonprofit has taken that over and doing great things. And it's, it's probably the most impressive board of young people that exists in, in the city. So because they're so strong, I feel like we're duplicating efforts and we're okay doing number one. C, on the odor board, I was actually looking for something else that I'll give you, but I was going through agendas when I first started, so it's not like I remembered this. But one of, one of the things that we did in August of ninety-eight, I made the motion, was to say the odor board just isn't working. We want to refer it. We did a survey and we did some other things. I'll pass this around just because I think it's funny that this is one of my first meetings in ninety-eight and my last meeting, we're back to square one. My view of it is, and I think we need to say this loud and clear to the neighbors that are here, that, that the odor board is kind of in a crutch and we haven't really gotten very far. We're not doing this to lessen our commitment to the odor issue, but we're doing it so that the council owns it and the manager and our city attorney own it because we want to do something about it. And I think if we can do something about it, if you all can do something about it, it'll be one of the, it'll be one of the things you get the most cheers for in the next few years.
Pleasure. And. I don't think the odor board's met since I've been on council.
Yeah, it's, but, but it's easy for us to say, well, we have an odor board.
Right.
Well, let's, let's face the facts. That's, that's been a crutch and we just need to create a closer line of authority just to the council. And so by approving C, that does that. So if it's okay, mayor, I would, you asked to move them one at a time?
You can move it as a block.
Is that all right? I'd move fifty-four, A, B, C. With, and refer it to the manager to come back and schedule a workshop and to the city clerk to help think through the qualifications and membership of, of all of our commissions.
And in preparation for that, four years ago, the city clerk would send us a list as we had terms that were expiring, but it, it showed everybody's, who they, who appointed them, when their term expired and what their qualifications were. I don't see that anymore. I mean, and it used to be online, so you could actually go online and see it. And now all it does is give you the members, but it doesn't give you any details. And I don't know why that's changed.
The new website, Ma.
Pardon me?
The new website doesn't have it.
It doesn't, it doesn't allow to show when they expire, right? Because I've looked on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just can't do what we could do.
But could you do it internally for us so we can see it?
I believe I just got some from Kay.
I can give it to you, you know.
I just got one.
Once a month, I can give it to you every meeting if you want.
I think the other thing is the list of people who've signed up, some of the names on that list are relatively old. I mean, as far as two thousand fifteen, so I think we just need to clean up some of the lists.
For my last appointment, we had three women, and I called one person, it was for, it was for plan and zoning because I reappointed. But one person had moved, one person was no longer interested, and one person just was not even remotely qualified. Those were the three women. Those were my choices.
I think that's just something we need to discuss, too, when we talk about the boards and commissions, the list of the names and how long you keep them on.
Okay.
We voting? I'll vote.
I voted.
We already have one that moved. Chris moved.
I know.
Oh, I thought you said you removed.
No, we're good.
We have everybody, so.
So what are we doing? Are we referring it to?
Yes, we referred it to, we approved this and then we referred the odor to legal and.
Do we need second and third readings? Like these will come back?
So, so we had seven yes, motion carries.
We have second and third reading, correct?
No.
You want me, you want me to waive the second and third reading?
I don't think you're.
Sure.
We're not, we're not going to amend this.
We're not amending anything here.
This is, your whole point was this is incremental progress.
Right.
And then we've got more work to do with the work session. I'd be okay with waiving the second and third reading, but I don't know that.
I would be, Chris, if you don't mind, I'm going to waive the second and third reading. But I, I want to make sure that we are directing your staff and legal specifically in C to do, to find out who's not doing the best practices and make sure they are and what are legally we can do. And then we're going to schedule a workshop to talk about the other three boards that Josh.
Professional requirements.
Yeah, that Josh talked about and the professional requirements. You good with that, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Seven yes, motion carries.
That's fine. Okay, now we're to fifty-five. Amending chapter seventy-four of the municipal code regarding changes to the golf fees and the addition of Terrace Hills Golf Course, now owned by the city of Altoona, to the golf course eligible, golf courses eligible for the use by annual badge holders. Council communication number nineteen-five-twenty-nine. Anybody here want to speak to using Terrace Hills with your annual badge?
I think this is great for the residents of the city of Des Moines. I'm, I'm going to move fifty-five and I'm going to waive the second and third reading unless there's any other discussions.
I think we're good.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, now we're going to move on to a very special item that was added, fifty-five I, from our own council member, senior council member-at-large, Chris Coleman, to request to speak on a wide variety of issues.
A wide variety of issues. Actually, credit Josh. Josh said sometime you should share that stuff with us before you should go on liquor license. And there's a number of things that I wanted to just get out there that I feel like I've played a role in. And I'll try and do this quickly, but I would, I would appreciate it. The first thing that's coming around, and I'll, I'll put this on the screen, is, is it has to do with liquor license. People seeing it, that's not that important, but it's two stories from the register. Same day, two shootings, two problems, took a lot of our police officers' time responding and investigating. And I would say that the reason that those happened is that the locations were magnet for people kind of hanging out. They were places that do business with the liquor license, licensed because the council approved it here. And as you've watched me, I have voted against hundreds of license since all of you have been on the council. I think I voted against four or five this morning. And I, I've kind of had a rule because I've tried not to make it subjective. I think places that operate into the evening with one employee should not be allowed to have a liquor license. And so I've used my vote to oppose any where a single person works and they have a liquor license. Unfortunately, many of the things that I've suggested over time are to crack down on liquor license. I'm looking, I was looking at my daughter Maggie because she knows there's a couple operators in downtown that I don't like. She thinks they're nice places. They, they probably are, but it, but it, but, but we've played games with many of our regulations with a lot of people, and they're a lot of operators. And, and so what I passed out to you is I had the chance to represent Des Moines last fall over several meetings with the Iowa Liquor Board. I don't, they have a formal name, but. Thank you, Joe. And in there is the reports that the city of Des Moines made, primarily our attorneys, Doug Philp and Jeff Lester, the police chief and the deputy chief were a part of that. Jeff, I'm talking about liquor license and, and the work that we've done. We have tightened our own code numerous times since I've been on the council. One of the weaknesses of what we've done is we've had some really bad operators that we can't punish because they can always appeal to the state and the state has a history of being very true to the regulations and laws of the state, which means the regulations and the laws of the state have to change to empower local officials like yourself to monitor it. And there's a number of things that I, I could tell you. One of the things that we fixed that was a problem is we have a lot of restaurants. A restaurant is usually given a liquor license that's a restaurant because it's close to a sensitive area. It's right in the middle of a neighborhood. It's close to a, you know, a school or it's grandfathered in from a long time ago near a church. The definition of a restaurant really is that they get more than half of their proceeds from, you know, not the sale of alcohol. But we've had operators that have sold a gin and tonic as two different items, you know, a dollar for the gin and three dollars for the tonic. And even in their drinks, they are out of compliance. We, that's, that's one tiny thing that we were able to fix ourselves. But one of the, like, I've had this dream that the liquor board would champion laws, and I think cities all over Iowa would join in, that would give us more control in terms of hours. of hours. For instance, right now, if you're a restaurant or a non-restaurant, you have all the rights that anybody else does. But if the reason why the zoning board of adjustment is letting somebody be a restaurant is because they're in a sensitive neighborhood, we should be able to say you can't operate until, you know, after midnight or after 11 o'clock. We should, we should have the wherewithal, if we're the one granting the license, we should have the wherewithal to be able to restrict that. I, I think that a restaurant shouldn't be a restaurant, again, they're usually in sensitive areas, if their bar is open, but you can't order food after so long. You know, someplace that's a restaurant that's open for lunch with food, but at night you can't order anything is, is skirting the rules, I think. And it's been a slippery slope. All of us can think of issues that have happened in our own neighborhoods where a liquor establishment went downhill, attracted a bad crowd, created problems. Not far from my house, we had two shootings. But it's happened all over the city. And I think controlling liquor license is the, the best way to deal with the worst problem. And so in Jeff's memo, I couldn't find like a letter that had your signature or your letterhead on it. So it, Jeff, Jeff's not credited in this, but it's his work. So know that that longer memo, did you get a copy of it?
I didn't.
Here, pass that down to him.
There's one down.
So I would, if, if you'd allow, I'd like to receive and file this memo and, and series of documents. I'd like to refer this issue to the council people that gather on legislative issues and to take it up at that legislative committee meetings and, and to reengage MAC in terms of legislation. And we did talk about this at the back meeting last week and at their legislative deal, and this is on their list, so I'm, I'm proud of that. We got that done last week. But I think the city should make this a priority and I think our neighborhoods suffer when we have bad operators. And there's ideas in here from other states, I included a couple other, or from other cities around Iowa, about the definition of good moral character and other things. We could have much stronger rules and protect our citizens from bad operators. And, you know, you and I were arm in arm over a couple that were in your, that were in your neighborhood on, on Indian Ole Road when I think you first joined the council. And, and we've had it this year at Fast Eddies or whatever it's called over there.
We've got additional, I mean, it's actually in Josh's word, 1101 Army Post, you've got it circled here.
Yep.
I'm sure he has heard a ton of complaints about it and I filled my fair share of them. You know, it's, it's problematic and it's unfortunate where we can tell the residents, yeah, we're going to grant them a liquor license because we don't have really any other choice.
Right.
And I think that's, I think that's a great idea to work with our legislators and, and see maybe if we can get home rule back and, and give us a little bit, because our Des Moines PD knows better than anyone where the problem areas are. Better than anyone else, better than everyone at the Golden Dome, better than anyone else. So I think that that's, that should be information enough for, to allow us to make those decisions. I think we just need to get this information in front of them and hopefully they'll be willing to work with us. I think that's really good info.
Do you care if I move to receive and file it so it's part of the record and to refer it to the manager and attorney?
Can I ask for clarification? The legislative change would be the definition of person, person of good moral character as shown here.
That's, that was something submitted from a different committee, but that is one example of legislative changes and weaknesses in the current...
What you'd really do is look at home rule regarding liquor license.
Yeah.
Right.
There are a number of items within the memo that were put together.
For legislative?
Right. Doug Philp and my staff worked.
To refer to that.
Really, really.
Right.
Putting together a number of suggestions that could be legislative changes, so I wouldn't want to narrow it just to that.
Yeah, no, you had, you did all the work for it.
Yeah.
Okay, so move to receive and file.
Move to receive and file, refer it to the legislative committee and our city professional staff.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
My, my second thing is an issue regarding bikes. I was surprised at the level of dialogue during the last political campaign about bikes and bike lanes and bike trails and people's frustration. And I, I had this idea, oh, probably in September, but I thought it would be a lightning rod during the campaign. And then when there was a bunch of runoffs, I couldn't bring it up before now. But I, I think for a lot of reasons, it's worth the city considering bike license, bike permits. And, and let me, let me first tell you, besides Des Moines, two of the three largest cities in Iowa have them. And many more do as well. They, Davenport and Cedar Rapids. Iowa City does too, which I think is like number five. Some of them, some of them are free, some of them are more expensive but last forever, not a year. They're, they're voluntary, nobody, you know, goes to jail for not registering it. But in, in those communities in Des Moines, I think it could do a couple really obvious things. One is it gives the police a crime fighting tool. And, and two, it creates critical revenue for us to continue to maintain all the bike facilities. Now, I'm not, I'm not in some dream world, it's not going to generate that much money to repair all of our works, but the criticism has been that we're doing so much for bikes and they're not paying for anything. And I think from a political standpoint, this is a really compelling way to go forward, I think, where we can say to people, we've started this, they're paying, they're paying for a permit, it's helping us fight crime easier, we're saving money there. And I think politically it can be a good thing because somehow, somehow this generational thing between people that hate bikes and people that see it as the future, you know, we got to bring together. And I see this now, I, I don't, I don't bring this up to be divisive or anti-bike, I bring it up really to be, you know, pro-bike and thinking about a way where we coexist better. And I think it trumps the argument that you hear most often, which is, and they're not even paying a darn thing. And I, I think, I think they're, I think, I think it could be worth it. I'm not going to be here to implement it. I will say one other thing about it. When I was a kid, we had bike permits. It wasn't a punishment to go get a bike permit, it was like the greatest day of the year. You know, you got your little sticker, you put it on the, on the frame of the bike, there was a sense of pride. It's like, you know, my dad has a license plate, I got my license.
And Chris, where did you go to get your license?
We went to the fire station.
Yeah, the fire station.
We went to the fire station.
That was the best thing because we got to go to the fire station.
I don't know how it could happen, but I think it's, I think especially after the dialogue and the political campaigns, there was no really uniting two different camps and visions for our city on that. And I think we have to find a way to unite it, and I think this might be one. And I wanted to bring it up and voice it because I think it, I think it could be a positive step forward. Let me also say, I, you know, Joe is going to be chair of the MPO. I think it could be a regional deal where the MPO, maybe we could talk to them about managing it. And if our city clerk or we sold one somewhere else, you know, maybe we get a dollar for selling it, but they get $4 for, you know, managing the program or something. And the database then is shared between cities and police departments. We have a new city clerk that has a, a ton of competence and energy. I think there's a way where we could put this together and it could be a really positive step forward. So I throw that out. Item three. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm happy to have a conversation, but I start on this issue with a great deal more skepticism about how it would work and the value it brings. I, I start from, I mean, there, there are a lot of different pieces to this and a lot of different issues that get sort of lumped into one. Anyone who, who lives here and owns a bike is, you know, they are paying for the roads. I mean, they're property taxpayers, it's part of what, what they're doing. Our trails are part of our park system and we, as a council, actually just made a move in the other directions in terms of how we ask people to, to pay for part of our park system when we lowered what we're asking folks to pay. So I, I have that concern and I particularly have a concern of creating a barrier for folks where, you know, there, we already, I think, as a city, struggle from an equity perspective. And so when you talk about layering fees on, on this, I worry about what implications it could have in that, in that regard. I'm all for helping, you know, if a registry can be a useful tool in recovering stolen property and creating a voluntary registry and creating that level of awareness, I think there's, there's value there. I also worry knowing that this is one of those things where to justify the administrative costs, you know, there's a cost to implementing a program like this. And I don't know that we could ever have a fee that would be high enough to justify the cost of administering the program too. So I worry about all of those pieces when, when we do this. I also, when, when you talk about bikes in the context of, of the MPO, you know, there's another piece that I, I'm waiting for action on and that I, I would hope that we prioritize more than, than this in that regard, because my understanding is the MPO is going to, has been, or maybe the city, city staff have been working on a model bike ordinance. And that to me is something that could help reduce barriers and is, help implement best practices. And that, that one is, I think, probably ready to go, at least from my understanding. I don't know what the status is, but I would like to see that, that happen before we direct staff and direct the MPO to start working on something like, like this. But I'm happy to keep having the conversation and...
I think everything that you say are valid concerns and if they weren't concerns that we couldn't overcome, we probably shouldn't do it. But I, I, I do think there's a chance to do it. I think we do, I think we currently have a bike ordinance. So...
So just, just to add to that comment, you know, we, we license our dog, we have, we have a dog park, we make sure that they have to pay to use the dog park. This is a, an ongoing issue that I hear every single neighborhood meeting that I go to when we start talking about bike lanes and we start talking about this. Well, they don't pay for anything, they don't do anything. I've heard from legislators, I've heard from local senator, you know, hey, I remember when we used to, to get one of these, I'd like to see that happen. So I, I think it's a way, like Chris said, really to bring people together where we can say, well, yeah, they do, they do actually pay. Because a lot of the folks don't pay property taxes, Josh. They live in an apartment or they live in a rental. So they're not paying the property tax to the city of Des Moines. Now, their rent possibly could be, but they're not the owner of the property. So, I mean, we're, we're just asking, and, and we can sit here and debate it all, all we want, but, I mean, there's pros and cons to it. I agree with you 100%. You had some very valid points, but, but let's not forget that we, we license dogs to use a dog park that we bought and paid for with tax dollars. And we go ahead and we make them pay extra money for that dog park. So just, you know, it, it's not like it doesn't happen in the city of Des Moines to use an amenity that we offer. So just, just to that point, it, it's just something politically, when, I don't know, maybe it's on different sides of town, maybe on your side of town, you're not hearing the same complaints that I'm hearing, but I hear it constantly. And so that's just my two cents worth, probably worth about two cents, so it's not a big deal.
It's something we can look into and see what the other cities and really have...
I mean, if other cities are doing it, I mean, it's not like we're going to charge them $100 to license your bike.
Yeah. All, all I'm trying to do is throw that out there. I wanted, I'm looking to solve a problem that I think we don't talk about that much. And the problem is that we have vastly different viewpoints on our bike investments and we got to find ways to start to bring people together.
That's exactly right.
And, because I want them. I, I, I love our trails, I, I love our bikes, but every time we've dealt with this, every project has been, has been, you know, filled with lightning and thunder. And, and I'm just trying to find some ways to throw out some ideas and challenge you guys, refer it to the manager to, to think about and see how it's worked in other communities and see if it might be something that could happen here.
And just one added thing, the people that love bikes are very vocal. The people that don't like bikes aren't that vocal until you get, sit down in a small neighborhood meeting with them and they get upset because they're paid, where the biking, the biking community will fill this room full of 200 people. And we think that that speaks for the other 200,000 people that, that live in the city.
Well, it's both sides. And one thing I'll, I'll note, you know, when we talk about the bike infrastructure, some of why we have so much space for bike lanes is because we spent generations overbuilding our roads. And we create more that we have to maintain when we do that and we can actually save money by right sizing those roads. We can make those roads safer by doing that. And then we've got that extra space, which you can actually provide some additional value by turning it into a bike lane. I agree we need to help bring people together and part of that is we need to tell the story better, right? And educate folks. Because I get folks, I mean, I get people who, who don't like the bike lanes too. And part of our job as people serving the city, you know, we get, we get a broader range of information and perspective. We learn about how, it's not just, you know, it's not just an investment in a bike lane. Part of why we can do it is because maybe we overbuilt that road in the first place and we're trying to make a safer design so we have less accidents and less fatalities on our roads. And, oh, by the way, we've got some extra space so we can create a bike lane and an amenity that makes the community a little bit better and that, that roadway work a little better for everyone. And those are important pieces to it. So I welcome the conversation.
Yeah.
Chris, do you have anything else?
I, I do have a couple.
I just want to add one other comment on the, on the bike lanes. About a year and a half ago, we had something before us to repair, repair a bike path over in Ward 1. I looked at that and I thought, over $600,000 for repair. And I'm looking at Jenny and Gloria and I'm not going to sit there and look in their eyes when they're hauling their furniture, their prized possessions out to the curb because we left them hanging on our infrastructure needs and took care of a, a bike lane. That does not sit well with me and I see you guys look in your eyes. I wouldn't, I would hope I wouldn't be sitting here if I'd have made a decision like that. So we do need the conversation. We need to understand where our money is going and how it can be treated so the people get the benefit of both. I don't want to leave anybody hanging out there, so thank you guys for showing up.
The, the next thing that I had, and I did create a list of these, I'm sorry, just so you kind of know where I am in my list. So, because I didn't want you to be surprised. The next one is about homelessness. And this is probably the area that I leave feeling like there's still a lot of work to be done. And I've been lucky to be in the middle of it. In the, in the early 2000s, the mayor was, was appointed or selected or elected to serve on the Conference of Mayors Homelessness Task Force. And he brought some people to Des Moines over a period of years, I think primarily in 2007, 2008. And in, in that period of time, we, we hired a group that was somehow associated with DC and new HUD rules to write a plan. That plan, I think, is still on our, our website. I, I have it here. It, it's dated 2009. And the reason I mention that is over the last 10 years, we have made such great progress on the items in there. Not long after that, we recognized that we needed a new shelter downtown. And the Homeless Coordinating Council was formed, the mayor and I, Angela Conley and Bob Ronell. Matt McCoy serves on it now and we had other interested parties. And I, I just, I, I know that the mayor is 100% committed to this, but there is enough work to be done that I, I hope other people sink their teeth into it. This is really important and we, we really are at a sea change. So I tried to put some important points out, as I saw it, into this document and I'd like to receive... like to receive and file it. When we started, we wanted a new shelter. We got Central Iowa Shelter and Services built. We were in a protected, protracted, thank you, attorney, lawsuit over the potential site on KIWA, which now has really cool things being built on it. We moved it back down to Mulberry, and we've been on a really good run since it, since it opened, I think, in 2011. And I'm really proud of that. This homeless issue is something that only makes the news or paper or people care about it when there's bad headlines. And we've had a lot of them. Not because the city was making mistakes, but because it's just a difficult issue and people really need a smart government on their side. We've done some hard things, too. And I look at coverage of the cities on the West Coast, for instance, and the dramatic increase that they have in homelessness, people living on the streets, on the sidewalks. If you haven't seen what's going on on the West Coast, Google or YouTube, Google YouTube, LA Skid Row homeless. And you can watch a devastating story about what happens when a community isn't prepared to do the right things with love and the right things with tough love in terms of keeping people from making homes where they shouldn't. And we've taken a lot of razzing and a lot of crap from a lot of people. Some of my favorite people, a couple of them are here tonight, that thought we had made monumental mistakes in trying to manage the homeless so they can't have permanent homes in our parks and public areas where there were safety risks. Those kinds of decisions are gonna be on the council going forward. And, you know, the mayor and everybody else is gonna need everybody to sink their teeth into it. As I've watched other cities, it's the quickest way for a city to go downhill rapidly, to not manage that, the population, give them hope, jobs, housing, and making sure that we're doing right by them. The irony of the Homeless Coordinating Council is that, that what we set out to do, give energy and political clout to build a new shelter, to revamp the Continuum of Care Board, that's kind of federal government lingo, but it's a requirement that all cities have. In essence, if we have a strong community of care and community of care board, the HCC worked itself out of a lot of its initial roles. And so I'm making the case, because I think there's some people that think, well, maybe the HCC did its work and it's time to retire it, and Coleman's been the chair for a decade, so we can just close it down when he leaves. I don't want you to do that. It's too important and we've accomplished too much. And so I've laid out some thoughts that I think could guide how the Homeless Coordinating Council functions in the future, that now more intersect with the Continuum of Care. I took too much time on that issue, but it's, it's really, really important to me that the council continue to be committed to treating our most vulnerable citizens with love, first off, and tough love, second, so that it, that population interacts and is interdependent with the population at large.
I just want to thank you for this update. I think this is one of the examples where we're losing some of your institutional knowledge on a really important set of issues. And I will also say, this is one of those issues that, just in my brief time on the council, I think this is one of the hardest issues that we deal with. There are not any easy, easy answers on this. And there is a lot to grapple with. So I agree that this needs continued attention. And Mayor, I would offer my services on this issue. I think regardless, the issues would just come, because I have the downtown area, just the geography of the ward that I represent, some of these issues just come to the third ward and I'll be dealing with them anyway. But I want to be more engaged on figuring out solutions. I don't know what those are.
Well, and one of the things that I think the city has, and Chris knows this, and one of the reasons why we thought the coordinating council was so important moving forward, there's a lot of federal programs, and we did bring the federal people in here to work on it. But the money, the CDBG money comes and then goes through COCB. And we thought that, you know, we could help direct outcomes for homeless to make improvements in the programs. And Polk County has certainly been a good partner of ours, but the money does come through the city. And so, you know, I think it's important that we stay engaged and involved in it and make sure that we are always trying to improve outcomes. And so, Chris, I did hear you want to receive and file this particular deal on the Homeless Coordinating Council, so I heard that motion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Chris.
I'm trying to go quick. The next one is something that Bill, Connie, and I have talked a lot about, and I thought it, I don't know if it was in the agenda or not, but there's been suggestions from some great citizens about an infrastructure committee. I've been talking a lot, I don't know if you guys want to start, but we're doing really good things and we've, we've generated some positive comments because we have some real champions in the neighborhood that are watching these projects happen. Two of them are right here in the front row. And the idea is, is there an ongoing way? After the flood, we said we, we wanted to kind of have a lessons learned, a committee to kind of look at things. But is there a role going forward, some kind of committee that might help us in telling the story of our investment, of our investments in stormwater and flood protection issues? Is there somebody to champion additional dollars, whether it's the state or federal government, that are citizens that care about these things? I'm not quite sure where it will go. It's nowhere close to being, you know, a final idea. But I think Bill and Connie and I just wanted to voice that and get it, get it out in public and have a chance for the manager to kind of think about how that might work.
I think this goes back to when we said we, what type of boards and commissions should we have or oversight committees, only because of what the issues, I know that Gloria Hoffman has been addressing this for how many years, 20 some years, and wants to make sure. So what is the mechanism to have a group that can oversee our, what we projected to say we were going to do? Did it get done? And how do you advocate for more funding or the need to continue the funding based on the need? I think that it's, from past practice, there was a lot of talk, and I know we've moved it up, but I think it's important to, I know on, when you're dealing with the sales tax dollars or any of those, to have some type of oversight. Did we say we did what we said we were going to do? And what is the timeline going to be?
I think it's a good point, Connie. Gloria hit me with was, we had a 20-year plan in place, and that ended like in 2012. And so, you know, the communication that we give to our citizens is very poor. We need to have these plans put out. We need to have people understand it, point us in the right direction, and make sure that we follow through what we say we're gonna do. And to the mayor's credit, you know, we have been putting a lot of money in there. We need to keep trumpeting our own horn on that, but we gotta have timeframes. We gotta make sure that we are following what was laid out in the last two flood incidents and we get these things taken care of. Gloria, I'm gonna let you finish.
Thank you. Gloria Hoffman, 4200 Leonard Place, I think you all know me. Jenny and I and several others served on a study committee right after the flood, and we made recommendations, and we presented them to, at a work session. We never had the opportunity to really have them voted upon by the council. And I think some of us feel that, that you're eliminating some boards. I think a board that would deal with stormwater issues could have a real merit because we would have then a direct council, a direct connection with the council to make recommendations or ask questions, figure out the funding process, because, you know, we're using lost money, we're using the increase in the stormwater money. The other night, I think at the meeting, we were told that we had $145 or $146 million to be spent over the next six years. And yet, at the meeting that I went to, there is a stormwater meeting or a clean water meeting or committee, I should say, that is required, actually, by the government. And so some of us, several have participated in that. But...
Gloria?
Federal. State or federal?
Okay. Go ahead and finish.
At any rate, when we went to that meeting, we were told that the cost would be 150-some million. We're talking about spending 148 million. What happens to the projects that aren't funded? And that's one of our concerns, because some of these go back as far as the Closest Creek project and beyond. And so that's why, personally, I feel a board that had a direct connection to the council could request, could ask questions, and could receive information would be very valuable. And you were talking about qualifications, and I'm not an engineer, but I've had a lot of experience with stormwaters and floods. And we do have people in the community who would be able to do that. And so I think if you do establish a board like that, you need to determine what the qualifications would be. But I don't think they need to all be engineers because some of us, I have a lot of history, a whole basket full. And I think that could be of value, too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to her point, it would be nice to have something like that set up because somehow or another, we dropped the ball in Crawford Creek where we never finished Phase 7 and Phase 8. And we've had to go in and buy some homes and, you know, within the next three years, we're gonna make those improvements. But, you know, if we had a board in position like what they're talking about, you know, we would, we would have that person that we put on that board to be able to, from each ward, that's how I see it looking like. Because it, you know, with all due respect, it's not just your side of town.
Right.
It's everywhere.
Well, and Gloria, to everybody's coming here and starting to interrupt...
No, no, you're fine.
I've spent a lot of time in floods myself, all the way, probably from my adult life back to 93, and watched what happened in this city and devastated certain parts of it. But every time we have an event, it seems like it's somewhere else. And so, you know, the 47th and Holcomb and all the problems up in the Beavertale area that happened, and then also around Four Mile Creek, you know, in June 30 of 18, boy, did we learn some new lessons. But as I reflect back to 93 and I reflect to all the pump stations and everything else that we put in, and all the looks at the levees, and we couldn't do this because of the levee and this is heightened, and FEMA does this, and the Corps of Engineers does that, and the three or four other federal departments have other pieces. And it's interesting, in a city like Des Moines, and I listened to other cities that talked to us about what's happening, and they say, well, we were able to do this or that, you know, in our city, why aren't you? Well, I said, do you have any levees attached to your messing with the river? And they said, no. And I said, well, then you don't have to deal with the Corps of Engineers and you don't have to deal with FEMA, because they look at the levees and they accredit them and they look at different aspects of it. And we're sitting here now with a discussion going on around our whole levee system, waiting for some decisions out of the Corps of Engineers. And I gotta tell you, I've gone through six generals who have been in charge of the Mississippi Valley and six colonels that have been in charge of the Rock Island District that can't come up with a solution to allow us to do further study around the wastewater recovery plant and everything else that connects to it in this 22-mile levee system that we got in and around the Des Moines and the Raccoon Rivers. I mean, it's, this is so many levels of it. And certainly, I think we need citizen input on what's going on in and around the city of Des Moines and help our staff on the stuff that we can do. And that's what we're working on right now and why we're doing all that work up around Holcomb and in your neighborhood to try to work on those levees. And it's all of us working together, they're gonna have voices up underneath those gold domes up there to get a little more help there, and then even louder voices to get some people in Washington to make some decisions. We had a little more success, I will say, you know, three, four, or five years ago, you know, in Washington than what we're having right now. But I'm hopeful that we can bring everybody together. This is not partisan stuff.
Right.
This deals with all of our citizens.
That's right.
I don't care if they're, you know, independents or Republicans or Democrats or whatever. This is something we've got to deal with, and I think citizens' voices are important. So I like your idea of citizen representation, but we've got to speak loud and we gotta sing loud, as Arlo Guthrie said, if we want some, some action. Because I gotta tell you, you're getting it here, and we're spending as much money as we can to make some stuff happen, but we need some help up there. And we have to look upstream to see if we can get some people...
You're doing as much as you can right now, but that hasn't happened in the past.
Yeah.
And that's the thing that I think we have, these are the decisions you folks make. And many years ago, we were told that there were other priorities. Well, when hundreds of people, literally hundreds of people suffer major damage, then you talk about neighborhood beautification and revitalization. I'm sorry, but that has to be a council decision, and that's why I think it's important to have a group that has a direct contact with you.
No, I agree. I don't disagree with it at all.
There were many years where the, the dollar amounts that were spent in Closest Creek were as little as $800. So we need a train that can stay on the track, that makes sure that these projects get done. This is not about Beavertale. This is not about 47th and Holcomb. This is about the entire city. We know we have a problem. When I was on the Capital Improvement Infrastructure Committee, we, one of our recommendations was the master plan for the city. I mean, we need to know a baseline of where this city is at, and we need to figure out how we're gonna get there. It's, it's, it's been tough conversations that so far, it's gonna be tough conversations to get where we need to go. And we have to have a mechanism that's gonna get us there. And it has to be a direct report to the council. And it's, you know, as you said, Chris, it's one for all and all for one. I personally made the commitment to myself that we gotta see this thing through. I've been through numerous floods in Des Moines. I love this city. We need to get it done. I hope you all will, will agree and, you know, will do what you can to, to get this, this entity in place, but it's, it's the right thing to do for the city of Des Moines.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any grand plan, and I, Bill and Connie and I have talked about it a couple of times at coffee, just about, you know, how might we approach it? We said, let's throw it out. And, you know, how we define the committee, having people represented from each ward and all throughout the city is important, so...
And it should include the flooding. I mean, we've got business owners along Four Mile that, that suffered millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of damage for the businesses that flooded in 2018. And, you know, we weren't able to help them at all. They got zero help from the city.
And they probably didn't get much more from insurance companies, either.
No, I'm sure they didn't. And they had to completely rebuild. I mean, they lost, lost everything, multiple million dollars, and they, they didn't get any assistance from anyone.
No, did we? Yes, we didn't either.
Well, all good reasons. Side note, one of the reasons I love serving on the council is there's almost never an issue that comes up that somebody here isn't an expert. I was working at United Way when the mayor was up to his earlobes in water at his business, devastating that. There's nobody that knows and lived this like he has. So it, this is a good group to solve these problems, and we're doing the right thing. But I do think an extra layer of input and champions would, you know, could help if set up the right way, so... If it's all right with you two, I'll just move to receive and file, refer it to the manager...
And then put a date to come back.
What date, you think?
By January, by January, February 1st.
February 1st.
First meeting of February?
Okay.
Okay.
Is that realistic, Scott?
Another workshop.
Yeah, that fits fine.
Okay. On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Had them pass this.
I wanted to quickly mention, my kids are leaving.
They're tired.
Everybody's tired. God, these guys in the fifth row.
They've got a performance at 7:30.
I know it.
You're ahead of them.
They're going to watch.
He's the one doing it, dude.
Okay, quickly, one of the things that I most enjoyed about being on the city council was an event that we no longer have. We raised some money and did a thank you event for our boards and commissioners. It was an all-star night. The board sat together and their chair would introduce them, and it gave us a chance to really thank them. About, I'm going to guess, 10 years ago, before Jeff got here, there started to be some concern about council members and fundraising and, you know, commissioners. I'd like to think that there is a way, as a citizen and an independent party, that I could work with the city attorney to put that event together on behalf of the city. People ask me what I'm going to do in my leaving the council, and one of the things I'd really like to do is to help you all thank our volunteers on the boards and commissions more. We do a really nice job. James Wells and his team of thanking our employees that have been around a long time, and it looked and felt a little like that. But it was different and good, and I'd just like to ask for your input and to put that out there and to make sure that if you have concerns about it, that maybe you voice it to me and I'll work and make sure that we don't put the city in jeopardy from finding sponsors or, but it was a free dinner and a free night for our commissioners, and it was just a nice way to say thank you.
And Chris, I think it's longer than 10 years ago. I've got the agenda from the last one that they ever had. Linda and I, you remember that?
Sure.
Yeah, because we sat at the same table. We kind of loved that little kiss we got every now and then.
Lancer Tom Lossus was.
Yeah.
I thought so.
In fact, I've talked to him about it. He wondered where it went too.
I think we had some private business people that stepped in and helped pay for it.
Right, yeah.
You know, we have a very generous business.
I see the issue with checks being written out to the city and the city doing it, and I just, so that's a quick one, but know that I'm going to try and work with the city clerk and others in trying to bring that back. And I think having a third party independent from the city will thread the needle of regulatory and legal issues.
And that'll be Chris Coleman.
Chris and Marcy Coleman.
Chris and Marcy Coleman.
She's like, whatever, we got to show it.
There you go, Marcy. Here we go again.
Two other quick things. In the coming weeks, I understand there's going to be a recommendation coming forward about security for our city employees and our guests here at City Hall and other buildings. It's not easy to vote for infrastructure and improvements of this building and others, but as somebody leaving the council, I think that's really important. And if you wanted to lean on me for anything, for a tough vote or spending money, you know, remind people that I didn't have anything to gain from it, but I think it's really important. My understanding from the manager is that the chief of the manager and others agree on a way forward. It's not free, but we owe it to the people and the good citizens that come down here and to our employees that have given their career and their life to the city, that they're protected. And in today's world of goofiness, I think the city has to do that. And I was hopeful that I'd be here when the recommendation came forward so I could take any criticism for spending money that way or, you know, locking down City Hall or whatever. The world's just different than it was 21 years ago, 22 years ago, when I started coming here, and I think it's time that the council do that. So I just, it's important enough to me that you hear that. The last thing that I want to say, and I have a series of things that I'll send you that are kind of handoffs, somebody's going to take my spot on the zoo board, somebody's going to take it on Mac, and I'll share that stuff in writing. But I want to talk about taxes for a quick second, and I'm glad I get to do it before we act on the market district proposal that the team has here. This is going to look like I'm patting the mayor and I on the back, and at the risk of looking like that, I'm going to do it. I don't usually like to do this, but when I, I'll move it down. I can pass this around so you have it. That bar in the middle is the year I was elected. The next year was the year the mayor was elected. The bar would actually work out better for him because it starts going down right away. But as you can see, when downtown and our neighborhoods were dead and businesses fled our town and residents left and no young people lived here, our taxes were skyrocketing year after year. That trend line is not something I just created. That's Excel's, you know, scientific trend line. It was going straight up. I've taken a lot of bullets over our tax rate, and I'm glad that there's many people on the council that share that now. For a long time, it was the mayor and I, you know, trying to, you know, respect, you know, our poor citizens, those on fixed incomes, and trying to watch the tax rate. But even as that, and by the way, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor said, I want to tell the citizens now to expect another tax rate because our assessments went up so high. And so that line is actually going to go down another 20 cents next year, 40 cents if the council does what we said before a month ago. So it's even a sharper decline. I bring this up because there's ways that the council can continue to have that number go down. And it's important because even though that number's going down that we control, people's taxes are going up. I kind of keep this to myself normally. For a long time, it was in our budget plan, but when I first got elected, we started tracking a couple of average assessed houses in town, and we've looked at how much they've gone up. And so I asked the finance department to update it now. But it rolls together the rollback, the assessment, the, you know, the credits that people have, and it shows on an average house in Des Moines what the actual taxes are that are being paid. I draw attention to this because even with the decreasing levy, the taxes that our citizens have continue to go up because of the assessment. In a lot of ways, that's a good thing for the citizens. It's a good thing for me. My largest investment is my house. I want my investments to go up, but it has to correspond with managing the tax rate. And quite frankly, as great as our city staff is and others, they hear from people and have ideas to improve our city all the time. The discussion about tax rate really has to start at the council. And I know that while that number's gone down, we've skyrocketed our stormwater and sanitary sewer fee because that's a pressing problem. Assessments have gone up, which have kept taxes high. Today, we heard a presentation where we'd raise fees on our citizens by, you know, approximately $20 over the next couple of years annually for garbage rates. All that stuff has to be rolled together. It's not just the levy that we have to worry about. And I, and from a practical standpoint, the lower the tax rate is, the less incentives we have to give people to come to town, and we get less criticism. Because usually the difference in what they're seeking from the city turns out to be very much the tax difference between what they'd pay in Des Moines versus one of the suburbs or from a different city. Scott knows this because he used to negotiate against the city to bring deals to West Des Moines. I respect him. I'm not criticizing him, but he knows what our weakness is, and he's worked hard to manage this. I mentioned the market district. My fifth meeting on the council was when we voted for the Gateway Project, which at the time was Gateway East and West, which turned into the East Village. I printed off the blue letter for you, and I want you to read it because this was one of the hardest votes I've had in 22 years, and it was my first month and a half on the council. But everything that our city staff predicted could be true has come true. The investment that we made at the front end 20 years ago, 21 years ago, May, has paid off dramatically. And I tell you that as a precursor to the presentation we're going to have and had this morning on the market district. I asked Mr. Hayes before, you know, what is, what's the anticipated taxable value there? We don't do a good job explaining to neighbors that when downtown generates money, they don't consume much of it. You know where we spend it? With police and firefighters in our neighborhoods, at parks and on roads and sidewalks and sewers. And so we need this engine down here, and I'm very appreciative of people that gamble everything that they have to bring new projects to town. So I wanted to put this out there, challenge you to continue to fight. I will tell you, I will partly view your success as a council on how well you use my money and how much of it you take from me. And I think that's the way a lot of people do, and I want us to continue to be a city that people want to live in, not that they're forced to. When I first joined Preston Daniels, who didn't support me, the first thing that he said to me was, you've got to help me. I don't want Des Moines to be the place where only the people that can't afford to leave live. That was pretty staggering from the mayor, and that's the way he felt like things were going. And we've created a city that's strong. We no longer have to beg for regionalism. People see that we bring something major to the table. We just have to continue to manage our taxes, and into the future, we'll be strong. So everything else I can send you, but those are the things that were on my list. I appreciate the chance to share them. There's not really anything to move, I'll move to receive and file those documents.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose.
But I'd love for you to read that gateway and see the gamble and how much it's paid off tenfold for the city and the citizens in our neighborhoods.
The thing that has paid off the most in our downtown, in addition to all those businesses, is people living down here.
Right.
It's created a, not an eight-to-five time place, it's now an 18-hour to 20-hour downtown. It's changed dramatically with great places to eat, entertainment, great advances in the civic center, the arena, so much stuff going on and around Des Moines, and this is the heart of Iowa, Des Moines. So a lot of accomplishment during your tenure, Mr. Coleman. Could we have a motion to receive and file all of Mr. Coleman's comments?
I'll move to receive and file all of his comments.
All right, and let's vote on it.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, let's move on to item 56. Item 56, the appointment of Nicholas Scholl as an interim finance director and confirmation as interim city treasurer.
So, Mayor, if I could?
Yep.
Yep. So I've already spoken to the council about this, but I put it on the public record. I have every confidence in Nick's abilities to move the finance department forward. We're going to do this on an interim basis, but I am not starting the recruitment right away. Obviously, we need to get through the cycle of the budget, and so I would anticipate late spring, maybe even summer, before we would look at a recruitment. Again, I have every confidence that Nick can get us through this period, so.
All right.
Move item 56.
Item 56 has been moved.
Also, I'd like to thank Bob Peggins for his.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good idea.
I don't know if he's here, if he got the not be here, but for his work in the last few years here.
And his retirement party is Friday, 9:30 to 11:00.
Moving on, 57. It says revising the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use map designation for property in the vicinity of 4560 Hubble Avenue from medium density residential to industrial to allow for the development of 7.12 acres of agricultural land designated for residential development to be developed with a building for a training center and equipment and outdoor training site. Anyone here to speak to that item?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I will move item 57.
Seven yes, motion carried.
58 was not used. 59 is to receive and file proposal from JSC Properties LLC to redevelop the city-owned properties located within the market district and directing staff to negotiate details of a redevelopment proposal, Council Communication Number 19-554. We had a nice discussion about the future of that market district this morning. Some of our folks are here now, but if there is not any further discussion, I would ask, we'll open it up, if there is anybody like may comment, otherwise move it forward and...
We had quite a lengthy discussion today. We had a nice presentation done, I think, had a great discussion. Unless there's any questions, I will move item 59. And I'm glad Councilman Coleman brought that to our attention. This is something like the East Village where we stepped out and you allow private investors to dictate what the market's going to be, and we're going to do the same thing with this property, and we're going to move forward, and we're excited to see it happen. We know it's a few years down the road, but we're going to make it happen, and it's going to be beneficial to all of Des Moines, not just the downtown area.
I'll just add, I was impressed by what we saw this morning, particularly the vision that talked about, I mean, I took away some really key things. The density, the affordable housing component, which I think is critical anytime we're talking about new development, how you integrate that in everywhere in the community is really critical. Some of the things they were thinking about from a green infrastructure perspective and a stormwater perspective. You know, we weren't, we didn't have the benefit of that knowledge 40 and 50 years ago when we were developing neighborhoods, and we suffer for it today. And the fact that those lessons learned are being incorporated and using best practices, the connectivity that's going to be a key piece of this, the anchoring of a park, I mean, there's a lot that is really a model here, and I was really impressed by what we saw. And I hope that this is the type of thing that when we're someday given retirement speeches, we can point to the benefit that this has provided for our community because I think it has that type of potential. And so I'm glad, Chris, that you recommend, you recognize that and made that connection too. So excited to see this.
All right, as we...
If I could, Mayor, Council, in the spirit of the evening, I would just like to share a fact that I learned a few weeks ago. Jim County ran for mayor 22 years ago, and he lost. And he lost to Preston Daniels. Preston Daniels became mayor, which opened up an at-large seat.
That's right.
Which was filled by.
Chris Coleman.
Chris Coleman.
That's right.
And I think we're all thankful for the result.
Well.
Maybe Jim wasn't, but.
All the time.
Yeah, it maybe worked out okay for you too.
Now, on that, Paul, I will say that I, as I look at a individual sitting back there, Mr. Sloan County, that we share a, his great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather, I'm sorry, to avoid any appearance of conflict, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Six yes, one abstention. Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item 60, which is a parcel development agreement with Black Acre Development LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of the Kraus Group Real Estate and Riverpoint West LLC regarding the construction of a mixed-use development with an outdoor sports and entertainment venue along Southwest 14th Street, south of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, Council Communication Number 19-547. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll just move this real quickly, and I know this probably just deserves a clarification so the public knows what we're doing. just deserves a clarification, so the public knows what we're doing. You know, this allows for the land acquisition that we have to approve, and does not commit the city to any dollars for this project. Those discussions, and they're figuring out how they're going to pay for what they do there, those discussions will continue to be ongoing and come later, but appreciate the effort that they're making to bring professional soccer to Des Moines. I think it's a great opportunity, and I eagerly await what will come of these discussions. So with that, I'll move item 60.
All right, item 60's been moved.
Wait, my button, can you redo mine? No, it won't go.
No, I can't, unless I clear everybody.
Just clear it, and we'll vote again.
Did you do it? Okay, I didn't know how.
So we all need to vote again?
No. Ms. Linda.
She got it.
Seven zero, motion carried.
All right, unless anybody else wants to hang out for a while, let's declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Happy last meeting, happy holidays.